I will now call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. We are all participating remotely and the meeting is being recorded. First of all, is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda? And if you would like to say anything, you can either raise your virtual hand or turn on your video and raise your actual hand. Or I think star nine on a cellphone raises a hand. Or you can unmute yourself and just ask to address the board. This will be to anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. All right, seeing nothing, we'll move on to some of our planning board minutes to get this out of the way. Has everybody on the board had a chance to? Oh, I'm sorry. I've got an actual hand from Leah. Want to unmute yourself and address us?
Uh, yes, can I, can I speak to the, the Duncan that's proposed?
So that's later. Yeah. So this, this is for things that aren't on the agenda. So when we get to the Duncan, we'll hear from the applicant. We'll have some discussion and then I'll open it up to public comment then too.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. So, uh, board members, everyone have a chance to look at these minutes? Um, first one.
I motion to approve the minutes from eight twenty-five.
All right. I didn't see anything there. Anybody have a?
Second.
All right. So to approve the August 25th minutes, uh, Brenda.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And Chris.
Hi.
I am an I. So that is approved. Next up.
I motion to approve the minutes from, excuse me, September 1st.
I believe September 1st one was only me. It was one of these weird administrative ones. So I don't think we have a motion or a second. I think I administrate. Prove those minutes.
I rescind my motion.
First is done. And then, uh, September 22nd.
A motion to approve minutes from September 22nd.
Second.
All right, to approve the September 22nd minutes, Brenda.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
I am an I. Uh, no A and Rs tonight, so we'll move on to the continued public hearing for American Dream Realty LLC seeking a special permit and stormwater management permit under section 12.7 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, for a nineteen hundred and twenty square foot drive-through restaurant Duncan, um, property located at five and nine East Street. Um, so is there someone here from the applicant to speak to this?
Yes, I am here, Jessica Allen, representing RLA Associates and the applicant. Rob is having some technical difficulties on his computer, so I'll run it for now.
Excellent. Um, so we've had a lot of back and forth, mostly about traffic and some related issues since our last substantive hearing. Um, Jessica, do you want to sort of bring us up to speed on where we are and what we've, what's changed? I know it's a, a big question at this point, but.
Sure. So, um, we did communicate on October 1st, a revised set of site plans. Um, with an accompanying letter that walks through all of the changes that have been modified since the original set that was submitted in April. Um, I'm happy to walk through all of those details if the board would like.
I think that'd be helpful. I know all of us have had a chance to look at it, but I don't know if everyone following along at home has. So maybe it'd be helpful to go through that letter as a starting point.
Okay. Uh, would it be helpful for me to show a screen that has the site plans and we can walk through it?
Well, that sounds good.
Okay. See if I can make this work. Can everybody see the, the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I actually have up on the computer, I've got the original version here. So as a point of reference, I can toggle back and forth between the two.
Right.
Um, so I think the biggest, the biggest change that you will see is that these eight spaces that were initially proposed. Um, that were adjacent to the rail trail have been removed. Um, and that was, um, they were removed based on a request from the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee. And by concerns from a Butters, um, regarding tree removal. So that is the biggest change. And because of that change is a lot of, um, smaller changes that, that, that are a result of that. Um, the biggest one is, um, the retaining wall has shifted. So on the original set, you'd see that the retaining wall was here. On this portion of the, of the spaces, um, the retaining wall has now been shifted because those spaces have been removed and they're now, the retaining wall has been shifted to this location. So that's the second change that's listed on the letter. Um, third change again, as a result of the removal of those spaces. Um, the concrete staircase, the pathway that went to the rail trail, the bike rack, all three of those amenities have also been removed. Um, and they're no longer part of the site plan. Um, the dumpster pad was re- reconfigured slightly again, um, as a result of that shift. So if we look at the original set, you'll see that the pad, um, location and the size is a little bit different than what's being proposed now. It has, the pad size has, um, been reduced a little bit to accommodate for this curve in the radius. Um, but the dumpster pad is still, um, adequately served, adequately sized to serve the facility as proposed. Um, there was also a shift in reduction. In the building size, so the building size was reduced. And again, that was a result of the shift. So because we're shifting all of these items down. Um, this area here, which is noted on number 10 of the letter that was submitted to the board, this shrunk in size. You'll see that this, this here in the original set. Is no longer there in this current set. And the building size has shrunk as a result as well. So we've gone from initially proposed, uh, 1,920 square foot facility. And now we're looking at a 1,872 square foot, uh, facility. And that also results in a reduce of spaces. So initially there were 10 spaces here in front of the building. And now with the reduced square footage of the building, we can shrink this down to nine, accommodate the shift in the lanes and, um. And due to the reduce of parking and we still meet the parking requirements of, um, 23 spaces. The size of the drive aisle here at this location is now 22 feet. Initially it was 20 feet. So that has increased slightly, which is great. Um, we also have the addition of the do not block the box, which is shown here on the site plan. And that was a result of both the peer review and recommendations from McMahon Associates, um, to add this to the site plan. So that has also been added. The order board. You'll see is now located here in this location. Uh, initially it was over here. And the shift was a, was a request of the owner to move it so that it was more in the straightaway rather than on the curve. So, um, that would also, I believe mitigate some noise because the order board is going to be heading in this direction versus this direction. Um, placement of the light pole. This is, this isn't, looks significant, but I do want to point out that this pole. Right here, this mounted pole has shifted about 10 feet on the plan. And again, that's a result of the shift of the menu board. And, um. Uh, oh, the bike rack also has shifted. So that, that pole is a result of those two items. Um, I've already noted the landscape island here. You'll notice that the. The, the radius of this island here on the original plan has been slightly shifted. In terms of its design. Um, and that again is just a result of that shift of the wall. Um, I'm gonna jump to it. I'm not gonna jump to the, to the, um, hydrology plan, but just also noting that there has been reduction. In the subsurface infiltration basin, because we don't have as much impervious surface because of the shift, the reduction of those eight spaces, the shift. Um, not as large of a facility as needed. And so the subsurface infiltration basin has been reduced by 22 chambers. So those are the, those are the, all of the, the modifications and the changes to the site plans. That were provided to you in early October versus the set that was provided to you in April. Are there any questions about any of those items?
Any planning board members, questions about the site or the changes to the site? Okay.
Okay.
So that was. Sorry. Yeah, I think you're, sorry to interject. I think you're probably gonna get there. Um, but the site changes. So there was some discussion about the retaining wall information. Do you, I think you're probably gonna discuss the retaining wall. Uh. Heights and things like that. And I just wanted to confirm that the enclosure, the trash enclosure had a specification detail.
Yes, that was provided.
Yeah.
That was provided in the information that, in the packet for the seventh, October 7th. So it was one of the items in that packet and I'm happy to review that with you.
Okay, you're moving in that direction. I just wanted to make sure that in my understanding of the. Materials that the enclosure has got a roof. I just thought that was potentially different than one might expect. So I didn't know when to cover that. Minor detail.
Um, I can go through it now or I can go through it as the items in packet, the packet that was submitted on October 7th, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, why don't you just go through the items in the October 7th packet? We can, we'll get to that.
Okay. Um, let's see. So the first thing. What, what would the, do you, would the board prefer for me just to leave the site plan up for now? Or?
Unless you have something else you want to show.
Not at this point, not at this time. Um, so I can stop sharing if that would be helpful. There we go. There's all your smiling faces. Okay. So, um, so the first, uh. There were, let me see, eight items that were provided in the packet that was provided to the board on October 7th. Um, the first was a narrative response to various planning board comments from the August 20th meeting and the September 24th hearings. Um, so let's quickly go through that. Most of the items that we were responding to really had to do with those eight spaces that are no longer there. And so it's almost not, um, part of the discussion anymore, but I think it's worth just sort of noting. Um, on the site plan, there was questions about. Trees to be cleared. Um, since those spaces have been removed and the retaining wall has been moved fully onto the subject property, we're no longer on city limits. Um, there won't be any tree clearing on the northern side. Uh, there was a question regarding trees along the western boundary and whether those are going to remain. Um, we will be keeping exec, existing vegetation up to the western property line. Um, up to the, will be removed and replacement planting for screening and stockade, stockade fence will be installed. Um, I'm happy to show you the landscape plan. If you'd like to see that in more detail, it's up to the board.
Um, it might be worth it to look at that now that that's changed.
Sure. Should I just admit people that are asking to come into the meeting or does the planner have that? Okay.
We should still have that authority, I think.
Okay, good. Um, all right then. So here is the planting plan on the revised set. I'm gonna. Just reduce it a little bit. Um, so here are, here's the, um, the planting plan. These are all arborvities that are set to go in. Um, and I believe I discussed in a little bit further detail about the growth patterns of those, but they will become fairly high, fairly, um, wide and provide a, a, a. Pretty significant screening on the property. So there's, I believe, 34, oh, no, 31 here. Um, to be placed on this, on this side. So, but we will be clearing up to the property line to there. But then this, these trees line here on the side will be remaining. There'll be no change there.
Jessica, do you know how, uh, uh, what size the arborvitie will be when they're planted?
I believe four to six.
Okay.
Feet. If you look up here on the plant list.
Yep.
See here, the arborvitie and a four to six height.
Excellent.
Okay. Um, let's see, dumpster enclosure. Let's go to. Let me pull up item. Um. I can show you the enclosure now. Just hold on one sec. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. So this is a, a concrete dumpster enclosure. Um, a little bit heavier than typical. Think you can all read and look at the detail and see. Reinforced concrete block. So it's, it's pretty significant. It's pretty heavy. And I think it would address the board's concerns regarding, um. Um, you know, wildlife or odor or any of that sort of stuff.
And it, and it does have a roof on it, right? Or a covering to it?
I would need to confirm that unless it looks like there is a roof here. Yep, roof info, see note four. I can provide you, I can come, get back to the board on.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, but it does look to see that there is a roof.
Okay.
Happy to get back to the board on that. Okay, um, replacement plantings in areas where major trees or vegetation have been removed. Um, going back to the planting plan, this is what's being proposed for plants. There's no longer disturbance on the side of the site, which I think is, was the board's concern. I mean, it wasn't, I wasn't present at that meeting, but that is my understanding is that was what the board's concerns were, were tree removal on the side. Um, we're no longer having any limit of work outside the subject property. Um, the next question was in regards to a ramp for bikes adjacent to the stairs. Again, those stairs are no longer there. Those have been removed from the plan, so that's no longer an item. Um, and there was a question about regarding identifying off-street parking spaces dedicated to rail trail parking. There are no specific spaces that are going to be dedicated to rail trail parking. Those eight spaces have been removed. Um, profiler elevation. Um, we are still working on that. We do have something I can share. Would have to walk through it a little bit because it is a little bit hard to understand, but, um.
Let me just. Jessica, can I ask a question? On the, in the planting plan with the arborvities, um, along the abutting property, is there also a fence there as well? Is it a?
Yes, we have proposed a, a eight-foot stockade fence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this, I'm, I'm prepping you ahead of time that this is, might not be the easiest thing to read, but I'm gonna walk through it with you and this hopefully would provide some. Um, guidance. It's not the most beautiful thing in the world, but what, what our engineers are able to do is they're able to take the existing plan. And then sort of pull up using a 3D modeling system. So all of these purple lines are the existing contours. This is.
I don't think it's sharing.
Oh, it's not sharing?
Yeah, you might need to stop the share and then start it again to switch the screen.
How about a new share? Hey. She learned Zoom on the fly.
Jess, if it's helpful, I can kind of, I can explain this, um, through the chair, Rob Lebec, my Lebec Associates. So what this is really is a 3D surface, uh, that is generated by Civil 3D. Anytime we have existing and proposed surfaces, we, um, we, you know, generate them in Civil 3D and we can get cuts and fill volumes and. And pretty much, uh, everything we need from a, um, a design point of view, from a civil design point of view. Um, with that, we're able to kind of generate the contours, uh, and, and get a, a rough, I'll, I'll call it a rough idea of what these grades look like. So this is looking from, arguably from the corner of the intersection back at the, you know, at the front right corner of the site. Uh, the bigger rectangle being the, the Dunkin' Donuts and then that smaller square being the pump station. Now there's vegetation, there's, you know, there's a wall that would go where that sheer slope, uh, is along the edge. Um. And, you know, the parking lot is pretty much that area to the right of the building with the drive aisle kind of going around. So you can see that there's a, you know, there's a, a slope in the front. And then as we get a little bit farther back towards the, um. You know, the pump station, there's a wall as we had met recommend, as we had mentioned. So what we will be able to do is probably, you know, as we get a little bit farther along in the architecturals, we'll be able to give you a better feel for what exactly things will be looking like. Um, you know, by the way of, you know, photo simulation or something like that. But what we wanted to do at least for tonight was give you some perspective on what that corner will look like. So the grade already climbs. Um, at about a four to one, um, slope, four or five to one, and we'll be bringing it to, uh, a two to one for a little bit. Uh, to get up to our parking grade. And then we'll pretty much be coming across, you know, it's, it's gonna feel generally flat, but we'll be coming up. Uh, in that front slope, we'll have, um, juniper horizontalis planted along that slope. So that'll all be a, a, a landscape slope. And, you know. You know, likely mulch and, uh, and junipers along, along the front corner there where the arrow is.
So Rob, where do you think that that sort of sloped landscaped grass converts into a, a formal retaining wall, sort of roughly on this sketch that we're looking at?
Um, uh, right about, right, actually, uh, to the right. Um, a little more, a little more, a little more, a little more, right about there.
Starts about here, right?
Uh, just a little closer actually. But what happens is it's a transition where the, you know, the face of the wall is, is quite small at that point. And then as we, uh, drop towards the, um, the pump station, it gets, it gets larger, but it's, it starts with, with a pretty minimal face. And then, you know, the face of the wall obviously gets, gets greater as it goes back.
And so from that cursor, sorry, Rob, but from that cursor back towards the pump station, is that gonna end up being like a vertical wall?
Yes, that is correct. However, it is behind a series of shrubs that likely most of them, not all of them, but most of them are on the adjacent property and will remain. Um, so from about the corner where we were talking, uh, back to the pump station, there's some, there's some significant, a significant hedge row. If I can steal the screen for a second from Jessica, I could probably find.
Yep.
Uh, can I get, I think I need, uh, permission to share. In the meantime, I'll try to bring it.
What are you trying to share, Rob?
Uh, the Google, Google Street View. Just one second. And. Action. Hopefully. So this is similar view. Uh, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, so this is a similar view. So. We will have a portion of this area, these, these shrubs are, are taken down. A good portion of them on this right side here are actually off property. Uh, just, just within the right of way of, you know, Route 5. Um, so you can imagine that, you know, our slope. You know, our slope will be adjusted, you know, it's gonna be pretty subtle in actuality. Um, our grade, if you wanted to get a rough idea, you know, say our grade is raised about level with maybe about a foot up on the porch that you see there. Um, and then, you know, this, these shrubs come out right about here, but then the rest of these shrubs carry on. And if I can get back to that. Side here, just one second. So all these shrubs back here essentially stay. Um, these are off property.
Okay.
And, you know, so that, that screening likely will, you know, we don't control that screening. That screening will remain, um, unless for some reason. You know, the, the city or, you know, somebody associated with the right of way were to take those down, but there's, there's no plan on our end to do that.
In, in general, is the wall retaining well higher than the screening that we see there or is it lower?
Oh, no, no, much lower.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think, um. On, on plan, on sheet, uh, C5. Which is the grading and erosion inside of a control plan is where you have the top of wall and bottom of wall. You wanna show that? Um, you know, what it looks like to me, and I just wanna, I guess I'm asking for confirmation that the back corner where we were just viewing behind the pump station is probably the tallest point of the wall. My estimate is eight and a half feet. So it says the bottom of wall. Is a hundred and twenty-five, you know, so it's a measurement from a hundred and twenty-five, but the top wall is one hundred and thirty-three point four five. So. Yeah, that's how, the other way that we can assess the height of the wall is using these top and bottom calculations.
Yep, that, that's accurate, Jeff.
The back corner is the tallest point. And on, and then on each end, it will taper down, so to speak.
And so, Rob, the, the wall basically goes straight back on that side by the pump house. And then it, it looks like it cuts in a little bit around where the dumpster is, but that's the extent of the retaining wall.
Uh, goes across the back as well. Yeah. And then, and then that is correct. Yeah, there's no.
Right, okay. The pump house, it makes a turn after the pump house. Right, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
This is the pump house right here.
Yep, thank you.
So that's.
Yeah, so that's solid gray, you know, thick, thick gray line is the retaining wall.
Yeah, okay.
May I ask a question too? I mean, it may, maybe it's too soon. Would you have an expectation of what the exterior wall face will look like? Is this ready rock or some other, uh? Material?
Something, yeah, some, a large gauge block. Um, we haven't specified a block yet, but we can certainly work, you know, work through that with you guys as well, but. Um, you know, ready rock has been a solution that, that has been pretty, pretty well used. Um. There are others, but yeah, it would be a large gauge concrete block, um, that can be placed by an excavator and. You know, but, you know, is, is one that has an aesthetic to it.
And like, so ready rock would, the example would be, be, you either be behind the mills or, uh, around the Ferry Street development is a good example of what a wall face might look like. Do you expect a railing on top?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. For code, it would be more of a fan. Yeah, it would, yes. For code, we would absolutely have to have that.
Is there a spec somewhere of what that is proposed to be at least right now?
Yeah, we have, I believe we have a detail for the, the fence and also for the guardrail. So there would be a guardrail and a fence. Guardrails will protect the fence. And it would have to have be, I think it's forty-two inches.
There's the wood guardrail.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Any other questions on that item specifically?
I think that's it for now.
Okay. Um, the next set of questions from the board had to do in regards to architectural. Um, so I can put up if you would like. Um, the proposed elevation and sign details. So this was one question was in regards to providing. Architectural detail. And we can either get into it now or we can just hold the discussion until we get through all the items in the packet.
Yeah, I think that's fine for now. Unless planning board members have any specific questions about the sign at the moment, I think we can probably say that.
Okay. Um, also in the packet was sign. Details. So that's also provided in the packet for your review. Okay. Um, there was also questions on the drive-through. Um, and so we did provide, um. Some details on the menu board. I think specifically the question had to do with volume. And so our conversations with the architecture firm that is working on behalf of this client. They had indicated that these products incorporate an automatic volume control and that. and that it's referenced as an AVC. And the AVC adjusts with the, based on the outdoor ambient noise. So if there's more traffic outside, the noise from the, from the order board would be louder. And as it becomes nighttime and it's quieter, then the noise from the order board is, is softer. So it shifts, it automatically shifts with the ambient outdoor noise. Which I think is an important piece to that product. I think it's very cool, actually.
And so Jessica, I don't know if you know this, but for where this is located, is it likely that that'll be audible off site? Like on that abutting property, or I know it's, it's now it's going back over the rear wall instead of to the neighbors, which I think is probably helpful for that, but. You know, like I know we've talked about, say, like the TVs at Cumberland Farms, like sort of limiting the sound so that they don't really travel very far. Are you aware if there's any sort of, I assume it's all focused on the vehicle that's in line, that there's not really much incentive to broadcast to the world, but.
Exactly.
How that goes?
Um, I don't know how it goes. Rob, do you have any? I mean, I'm just, all the information I have is from the architecture firm and the specs that they provided saying that the volume can be adjusted. It, it's adjusted with ambient noise. I think it's something that definitely could probably be controlled by the franchise itself, similar to, to Cumberland Farms when those discussions were being had.
Right.
Yeah, they automatically adjust, but they also have a manual adjustment. So if there was an issue, you know, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's impossible for a neighbor to hear. I think it's, I think it's realistic to think that it's got to be paid close attention to. And that, you know, I think the redirection of it will, will certainly help. The vegetation and the fence will also help. But, you know, if there's nothing going on on a Sunday morning at, you know, is there possible you could hear somebody talking at the, you know, at the neighboring property? It, it could be possible.
Right. I mean, obviously this is in their interest as well. It's not like they want audio blaring at the person in the car that's making the order. So I guess that probably everyone's interested in that, but I was just curious. Thanks.
Yep, yep.
Also with sound, the board was interested in information regarding sound attenuation fences. And as we had noted earlier, there is an eight foot PVC stockade fence that's being proposed that along with the plantings would help with the noise. We provided a rendering of the proposed building and I've shown that to you already. And then the last question that the board had that was addressed in the packet was for the frequency of the trash pickup. And the franchise owners indicated that the dumpster will be emptied twice a week, no earlier than 7:00 AM by an offsite hauling company. So those are the list of questions that the board had asked for us to respond to, and that's part of that first section of the packet. Is there any other?
Any planning board members have any questions about that sort of area, the, the architectural and the layout changes? Retaining wall, anything like that? All right. Something else, Jessica?
Sure. So the next request from the planning board was for us to answer all of the commercial development performance standards that are in the zoning. And so you would find a narrative, which is the second item in the packet, which addresses all of the standards and provides a response. Would you like me to go through each of those individually?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So the first standards in regard to parking, saying that the no parking shall be permitted within the required front yard setback of a structure. And that there's a, if there's a hardship, the planning board may allow parking in the front without a good screening. So as the, as this parcel meets the definition of a corner lot, we do actually meet the setback requirements. Definitely on this location and with the, with the large, this is 95 feet, this area here within the right of way. And so there is a large area here, and we do meet the 15 feet requirement here for the setbacks for that, for the parking standard.
Great.
The second one was to the extent feasible, parking area shall be shared with adjacent businesses. There's no adjacent business here, so that is not feasible. The third standard was for actively requiring or requesting ride sharing or other ways to reduce trips. We're not requesting reduction of parking requirements, and so we're not asking for any of these modifications. Second standard had to do with the appearance and the architectural design standards. The design should be compatible with the character and scale of buildings in the city through the use of appropriate building materials, screening, breaks in roofs, wall lines, and other architectural techniques, variation in detail, form and sighting, be used to provide visual interest and avoid monotony. Buildings shall relate harmoniously to each other with adequate light, air circulation, separation between buildings. So let's go back to the elevation. So we believe that this, this does meet the character of the neighborhood. It's, it's not a flat roof. It's a pitched roof. It's got variation in detail. It's got variation in some of the architectural details with the gable brackets, with some of these other brackets, let me zoom in a little bit, overhang brackets. It's got, it's got fiber board. It has a fiberboard siding, ferment side, fiber cement board siding, excuse me. And so, you know, it, it doesn't look like a typical Dunkin' Donuts that you might see on more of a North Hampton Street or on a King Street where we have flat roofs. You know, large signage. It really is intended to sort of meet the architectural character of the neighborhood by making it look a little bit more residential in design. So again, we can get into this now or we can continue to work through.
Just have a quick question. I was wondering if the applicant would consider doing an architectural treatment like the building he has in Haydenville? I don't know if you want to bring that up on Google Earth, but I mean, given the historic nature of the neighborhood, is that something you'd be interested in doing with the building and with the signage? Cause just curious.
I can, I can speak to that. We have, we have had discussions about that. We do actually have a picture of that building.
I believe it's on the screen. Can people see it?
No.
No.
Okay, hold on.
So Mr. Sardina, since the beginning of this project has expressed to me that he's committed to trying to make the, make the building fit. This is the Williamsburg Dunkin' Donuts. This was a fairly controversial project. Mr. Sardina and I went before about 300 people in a, in a room and a bunch of burglies, they call themselves in Williamsburg, joined us for a joint meeting of the ZBA and the planning board. And we're pretty, pretty proud of, you know, in the end, how, how everybody sees how that it came out. You know, it's still a Dunkin' Donuts, which we, you know, a lot of people love, but some people were concerned about. And we were able to, I think it's a, an understated building right in the center of Williamsburg. And I think it's a, a feather in Mr. Sardina's cap. And so I think we're open to these ideas. I don't want to speak specifically for him. But I think if it's, if it's appropriate, maybe what we do is work through the traffic and then we would be happy to maybe circle back on the Architecturals and keep an open mind for sure, as, as I'd mentioned, Mr. Sardina is willing to do.
Great, that sounds good. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, you got a question?
Yeah, just on the same vein, and I understood what Mr. Levesque said. I think I, 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 hold on, I just lost all my views here. Sorry. Zoom is a tricky world. There's this little button I can't get without hitting stop record. Bear with me for a moment, please. Okay, I'm back. I just, I'm okay with moving forward with discussion of traffic and coming back to this, but I do, I do want to, I guess I just want to gently push back on the notation that this is not what you would expect to see on North Hampton Street, because I do want to, I, I want to drill down on this, so I'm willing to wait for a longer discussion. But I'm going to share the photo of, is this working? Oh, boy. I am stuck in Zoom world.
We see it, Jeff.
I go, okay. I have all kinds of tabs open. It's really ridiculous. So what I see, this is the East Hampton Dunkin' on North Hampton Street. And what I see is something very, much more similar to the Haydenville location that I, I want to have the, I want to encourage the board to, to look at the design a lot more closely. I think the color of windows, the trim, the, the small window gables, the, the cupola, the lighting. I think that there are quite a few elements that could make this more compatible with the character of the neighborhood. So I, I won't belabor it any longer. I have a couple of other images and some other things to discuss with the architecture, I think. I, I would urge the board that the current design doesn't need the character of that neighborhood. When you look at our North Hampton Street one, has a much more refined design than, than this one. So I'll put a pin in that for now, but I think the design is important to, to circle back to.
Yeah, I would agree, Jeff. Thanks.
Yeah, and, and just, just to clarify, my intent was not to push it off, but just to push it later in the, in the meeting and certainly have that full discussion.
I understand.
Perfect.
Okay, so continuing on?
Sure.
Okay. So lighting standards. The, the performance standards say that any lighting fixtures should be shielded, so they don't not protect, produce a strong direct light. We have revised the photometrics mostly because what was proposed in the initial set had an 18 foot pole, height, pole height. And what's permitted under the zoning is a 15 foot. So there is a new photometrics plan that was submitted as part of the new revised plan set. But even with that, you'll see that there, anything that's going over the northern boundary is really, it's less than one foot candle, which is really low. So the majority of the light stays on site. What does go beyond the site on the northern boundary is a very low foot candle. The next was that no standard should be taller than 15 feet. We just discussed that. So we've dropped that and revised that. Curb cuts, so number four access standards. Curb cuts shall be limited to the minimum width for safe entering and exiting and shall no case exceed 24 feet in width per lane. There's only one curb cut and the total width of the curb cut is 30 feet, which is 15 feet per lane. So we do meet that standard. All driveways shall be designed to afford motorists exiting to highways with safe, safe, safe sight distance. If you refer to the traffic impact study that was completed by McMahon, the sight distance between the driveway curb cut and Route 5 is 280 linear feet. The third standard under access is adequate pedestrian and bicycle access shall be provided. Sidewalk shall be provided to enable pedestrian access to adjacent properties between individual businesses, which is not the situation here. The authority may waive this requirement in a case where such actions, action is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the purposes stated in section 12.7 and 12.9. The existing sidewalk will be upgraded and expanded to meet the existing sidewalk on Route 5. And there's only one business within this proposed development, so we meet the standards as well. Landscape standards, number five. Parking area shall be subdivided with landscaped islands. No paved parking shall extend more than 80 feet in width. The largest parking area in the proposed project spans 24 feet across. There are six landscaped islands. And there are trees planted within all of these islands. We can go back to the site plan if you need to see that. I'm happy to do that. Our, our tree plantings exceed the tree planting requirements by two trees. Any exposed storage areas, machinery, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings and structures and other unsightly uses shall be screened from view using dense hardy evergreen plantings or earthen berms of wall or fence. Evergreen plants must be at least two feet tall at planting and grow to a full screening at the, of the, of the unsightly use. Plantings must be four feet at planting when abutting a residential zone. So as we showed before, we have an eight foot PVC stockade fence to be installed on the western boundary. We can either accept, the board can either accept this height or condition the project to reduce the height of the fence to six feet, which is what the fence requirements are in the city of East Hampton zoning ordinance. So the board can decide whether they want to increase the fence on that side to eight feet or stand, or stay to the standards of six feet in the zoning. That's in section 6.53 as a reference. As we discussed earlier, there's 35 arborvitae planted along the western boundary. Planting size will be four to six feet tall. Mature growth of these plants are 10 to 15 feet high and three to four feet wide.
31 arborvitae, sorry.
31, sorry. Landscape areas shall be properly maintained. Shrubs or trees which die shall be replaced within one growing season. Understood. We, we usually have a one year warranty on all plant materials. And the landscaped areas will be properly maintained by the franchise. And completion of the landscaping requirements may be postponed for a period not to exceed six months from the time of project completion due to winter weather conditions. We're noting this. We do not anticipate construction being completed in winter weather conditions, but noted. There's also additional standards that apply to projects or uses in the highway and general business district. And as this is in the highway business district, these standards apply. One is regards to access standards with curb cuts. Number of curb cuts on a state and local road shall be minimized to the extent feasible. We, there's only one curb cut planned on East Street, and there's only one business proposed at the subject property. Another standard under access is one driveway will be permitted as a matter of right per business, per project. There's only one driveway planned for the development, so we meet that standard as well. Additional landscaping and screening standards. We talked about the buffer strip of 15 feet wide. This is going to be met. And let's see. Traffic impact statement. So.
Sorry, Chair, Chair, can I jump in before we shift to the traffic portion? With the discussion of access and the curb cuts, can we, could we talk about the fire department's review letter? I think at this stage, the fire captain Constantine's on the call. And if we could tackle this, maybe he doesn't need to stay on the whole call. But, you know, the fire department issued a letter and a sketch requesting some consideration for their access for vehicles. And I just was curious the applicant's response to that so far.
Sure. So what I can share right now is a fire truck turning analysis that was completed. Does everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. Rob, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yep. So we have a program called Auto Turn. First of all, first and foremost, we will adjust as needed, fire department, obviously, everything that they need trumps, you know, site design. So we will certainly change as need. But we did want to illustrate the ability for, of, of the fire apparatus to get into the, into the site and around. I know that they wanted to be, make sure that the drive aisle could be utilized for, you know, fire suppression. So, so this illustrates two different line, sets of line work, the path of the fire truck wheel, and then the path of the bumper of the fire truck. So it's, it looks a little goofy, but generally speaking, as they, as the, the vehicle makes its movements, that these are the swing, so to speak, of the, of the vehicle itself. So we were able to, and I think Chris, Chris from my office put this together. I think Chris had a call into East Hampton, and I don't think he actually connected on East Hampton's vehicles. This, we did utilize because we're familiar with Holy Oaks vehicles, which we expect their vehicles will probably be a little bit bigger or longer potentially. That said, we did use Holy Oak, and we would need to confirm this with East Hampton prior to the next meeting. But the, the idea was to show, to illustrate how the vehicles can get in. If in fact, there's still a concern after, after we've shown this, we can certainly adjust the radius at the corner, at the front corner. I think that was, generally speaking, Jessica, use your. Right in there was the area of concern, which we can certainly change the radius as needed. But we want, we also wanted to try to maintain as much of that radius as possible, so that people, folks doing 180 degree turn into the site were able to kind of function as much as possible, that, that we didn't cut that down. So I think we've addressed it, but I think obviously the fire department needs a chance to review it. And if there are additional concerns. I think we've addressed it, but I think obviously the fire department needs a chance to review it, and if there are additional concerns, we can adjust as needed.
All right, Captain Constantine, are you on? Can you hear us?
Yeah, sure, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can see you too. Thanks for joining us for this. I guess my question, first of all, I guess it sounds like you might need to be some communication about actual apparatus and like what you guys have that you use. But there seemed to be a second question that you raised in your email about speaking with the Fire Marshal's Office, I think, about whether the drive-through needs to accommodate it or not. I don't know what that, what exactly that means, but also if you got an answer back on that, I don't know.
Yeah, so first I'll address the 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 access into into the drive. So I did look at that. Chris did reach out to me this afternoon from from your your firm. And I did give him some preliminary numbers. Unfortunately, the vehicle that I need to is down in West Springfield for repairs. So I have, I had two of the numbers, I had a width, and I have the length, but I don't have the the measurements on the axle to bumper on front and back, so I guesstimated based on our, one of the apparatus we have here. I believe it's gonna be probably different, but the the truck in question that was used in this model is a little shorter than the vehicle that we that we have. So we'll have to just kind of update those those numbers and and I can work with 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 you folks a little bit to, you know, remodel that and see how that does a- as far as as far as that goes. So yeah, I did speak with at at the Marshal's Office, and it looks like if, as long as the modeling works okay, and we can get around that for the to the access as far as around the drive-through, you know, we can count, you can count the width of the cars that are in line as as the, you know, as the apparatus access. So I just wanted to get that clarified, because this is kind of one of the first ones I've done with the drive-through and the access. So I got that, got that clarified, so so we'll just have to continue to, we'll work as soon as I can get those measurements and we can kind of model that. But it looks like it's gonna be relatively close, at least coming into that into the driveway and making that those first two turns, so, but it's something we could probably work with.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean, as Rob said, you know, this, this is more than almost anything else, it's probably an essential feature for any plan. So if the fire truck can't loop around, we'll have to figure out a way to make it big enough for the fire truck to loop around. But it sounds like you you guys can probably communicate back and forth in interim before our next meeting and and get that straightened out. Rob, I assume that makes sense for you folks?
Yeah, that that would be great. Yeah, obviously, like I said, fire comes first, so we'll make adjustments we need. It might be just as 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 simple as playing with the radius on the inside, on the right-hand side there. But regardless, whatever we need to do, we'll take care of it.
Just a quick question, the building is not sprinkled, correct?
I don't believe, no, it typically would not be.
All right, Captain, thank you very much. I think you can, you can go, well, you're probably already home, but you can stop attending if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll head home, thank you very much.
Okay, so that leaves, that's everything in the in the packet in terms of narrative to respond to the board's questions and requests for information. I think where we're at now is traffic. We've had, I believe, three now letters back and forth between McMahon and Foson O'Neil. And I'd like to turn it over to them. We've got Jeff Bandini here, who's representing the applicant from McMahon, to respond to any further questions. It looked like from the last peer review letter that came from Foson O'Neil, most of the items have been addressed at this point, and there's one last question in regards to number one, which had to do with the intersection. But I'm gonna turn it to Jeff and he can give the full, the full spiel of of what they have addressed.
Great, Jeff, before you get started, any planning board members have any questions about what we've covered so far tonight? Before we move on to traffic, not that we can't come back to it. Chris, yeah?
Sorry, trying to find mute. I got a couple questions. So, uh, can, is it something, I I feel like seven AM to pick up trash when this residence all around there is a little bit early considering the beeping that this truck is gonna be doing backing into this trash bin. Is, can we make a condition that it might be no earlier than eight AM? Is that something that we can condition?
I mean, we can certainly condition that. I think the first question is whether the applicant has an issue with that or if that would be okay.
I believe Mr. Sardina is on the line. I don't think he did. Manny, can you speak to that?
Yes, yeah, Manny Sardina from American Dream Realty. Evening, everyone. Yeah, that's not an issue, it's just a simple, you know, when we do the contract with a trash with with a trash company, that will stipulate no earlier than eight o'clock pickup.
Good question, Chris, thanks.
Okay, and then I have one other question, and this is, I I don't know the answer to this, but is there a requirement for light leaving the property? Does it have to be zero foot candles at the property line, or is one foot candle still, does it meet our zoning ordinance or any other requirements?
So what the standards say is that it should not produce a strong direct light beyond the property boundaries. So I think a minimal, little bit of light going over the boundaries is acceptable under your standards. I wouldn't say one foot candle is a strong direct light over the property boundary. I would argue that that's pretty minimal.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay, thanks, that's it.
All right, Mr. Bandini, you wanna dive in on the traffic?
I'm sorry. No, it's okay, Steve Severia from Foson O'Neil is on the call too, so if there's, there's other questions, they're both, both the peer reviewer and the applicant's consultant are on the call.
Excellent, thank you.
All set?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Jeff. So as Jessica mentioned, we've gone through a series of comments at this point between, you know, McMahon and Foson O'Neil and a few iterations of comments from the City of Holy Oak Planning Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we've also answered a few clarification questions from your board itself in a letter dated October seventh, which I believe Foson O'Neil has seen, because we received a response letter from them that addressed their comments, and again, if Steve is on the line, maybe he can speak a little bit more to this. So the only outstanding comment was related to the intersection. In our original comments, kind of centered around coordinating with NASTIOT and our lobbying to include the intersection of North Street Route five at E Street as part of their projects for the the shared use path. That is, as of right now, anticipated to end slightly north of the intersection at the rail trail entrance. So it was our task to kind of contact NASTIOT and lobby for the inclusion of that study. So as to mitigate any sort of existing traffic impacts that are out there now and certainly would be increased nominally from the production of this, of this proposed development. We also received a few comments from the Board Mayor member Sailor about a few of the clarification questions regarding the lane use code and and pass by numbers, and also the site distance field review, and then a request for additional information related to potential closures along Route one forty-one during times of inclement weather and other, you know, reasons to close that roadway for utility purposes or any other sort of natural impact or electrical outages or anything like that for any reason that that would be, that would be closed. So, you know, it's our task at this point to make sure that those those questions are addressed. We can certainly get, gather some preliminary thoughts at this point in terms of the routing for that closure. But we do have, you know, enough information offhand to respond, you know, formally to some of the clarifications from the board and from the outstanding issue with Foson O'Neil.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I I just wanna clarify, I was a little confused in some of the material, so there's, there is a project that NASTIOT has at least on their schedule, but it doesn't come down to this intersection, right? And there, it looked like they're not really interested, it's sort of tough for us, because sometimes we have, you know, the city can get involved and alter or improve an intersection, and here it's state-controlled, right? But so they don't have any plans to address that intersection at the state level right now, is that right, Jeff?
Not at this time, and that's, that's of our, our, our task is is to contact NASTIOT and and take their temperature. And it looks like Foson O'Neil kind of already did that. We haven't had any firsthand conversations with the folks over there to, you know, get the reasons why or why not this intersection should be included. We certainly think, given the merits of the, of how it functions within the study area, we think it's an important piece for the city, and we think, you know, given the, you know, the existing traffic numbers which we've documented, we think the city would definitely benefit from some sort of mitigation of this intersection to improve the circulation for, you know, vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians, especially given the the proximity to, you know, the rail trail head as well.
Well, it seems, it seems like it's pretty clear that it it probably justifies or like deserves a signal there, it's at least, right? But that's not something we can do, right? It's it's only the state can make that alteration.
Yeah, I mean, a- a- any sort of other treatments, you know, a signal or some sort of, you know, flashing beacon or maybe even a roundabout if it were to fit within the scope of the layout and the projects in the study area. I know, you know, travel speeds along Route five certainly documented in our study is as being a little bit more on the higher end, you know, not to the point where we think it's an existing crash data, but we think in terms of, you know, de facto traffic calming measure and to also incorporate some of those multimodal multimodal improvements at that location. So a signal would be something that that would be looked at, it's not necessarily the end-all be-all as to what necessarily would be installed if NASTA were to include it. Maybe something that they would look into as part of.
And so I know, I saw the same note, I think you did, where it looked like Foson O'Neil had reached out to DOT, and and maybe we can talk to them about that too. But do you still plan on reaching out to NASTA and seeing what you can figure out on their end?
Yeah, that's absolutely our plan. We don't, we don't intend to kind of just kick this down the road. We certainly wanna have discussions with them and find out know what we can do to help out and and aid and be the city's advocate for that location.
Okay, great. All right, so I didn't mean to cut you off, I think you were gonna go through some of that.
No, that's okay. I I mean, we we only have preliminary responses at this point, just to talk about, you know, quantifying some of the impacts at the at the alternate routes. You know, when one forty-one is closed, obviously that that kind of snakes traffic to some other minor roadways that may not, may not experience it during normal conditions. You know, certainly in periods where it's closed, you know, certainly we see less traffic anyway. I mean, if we're talking about something that happens during storms or winter conditions, we normally don't see conditions where traffic is on the high end. We like to, you know, when we analyze intersections, we've always looked at the PM peak hour, the Saturday peak hour, or in the case of of this proposed project where the commuter peak hours is, you know, normally would overlap with the peak hour of the proposed development. So on a longer-term scale, you know, the closures along one forty-one, we don't think any sort of of closures to E Street would demonstrate a significant impact to any locations along that route. If there's anything specifically that the board is concerned about any specific intersection or location, you know, would be happy to look into how that would affect it on the grand scale. But we think as a whole, you know, traffic volumes at that, at that location generally aren't gonna pose a significant impact of delay or queuing or anything like that.
Well, it's interesting, Jeff, because you know, we've been going through all this material, and I, then driving through town today, I saw that it's actually closed Thursday and Friday, I think, for five or six hours. I'm not sure if that's for the tree work that they do each year, or if it's some other road repair. I don't know how feasible it is to try to look at some of the traffic numbers during that period and seeing what happens, but it it's almost a a dry run time period when they're showing us what will happen. The mountain is closed. Admittedly, it's during quarantine, so it's probably down a little bit anyway, but I'm just throwing it out there that there's basically a real-world experiment happening this week that might be helpful.
Is that this Thursday and Friday?
Yeah, and I think it was nine to two PM, nine AM to two PM.
Yeah, so it doesn't hit the peak hours, the peak morning and out and evening commute hours, I mean.
And that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to say is, you know, a lot of times these, it it's the intentional closures are are kind of designed with that in mind. One, it doesn't wanna overlap with the peak hours, because, you know, construction or crews are sensitive to being able to kind of, you know, operate during times of less travel so that the disruption is minimized. Certainly, you know, we're sensitive to other events that aren't, aren't so scheduled, you know, you know, snowstorms and ice ice storms and things like that, but knockout power for, you know, days or hours, and crews have to be out there during the morning in order to get folks up and running. We think if that was gonna be the case, that the travel might be down anyway, because folks are, you know, staying home, because they don't necessarily have power that day. But if, you know, if you have specific locations in mind, you know, we could take a look at what the impact of those intersections are and then maybe do just a, you know, a a kind of offhand comparison of numbers between when it's closed and when it's not, and see what's impacting maybe.
Yeah, I'd really love to see those numbers, because I I think you have a valid point that if it's closed due to snow, you know, maybe, but there have been times when it's been icy and and the mountain road needs to close, but the other roads are open. And during the microburst some years ago, I think it was closed for weeks, if not longer. And everybody else was driving, so I, I mean, I really would like to see those numbers at the intersection of Route five and E Street. People who take Route five and need to turn left onto E Street. I think that would just be really useful, because I'm I'm just really interested in dealing with the reality that can occur. I know it's by no means usual, but I think we have to really consider the situations there that actually do occur. So if you could do that, that would be really helpful. I'd like to see it. I don't know about other planning board members.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I thought just what, just when I saw that sign, I thought this could be helpful, mostly for this intersection and question, and it it just occurred to me. Yeah, Rob, sorry to cut you off.
It's, no, no problem, thanks. So it's really a question for Jeff. Just from a practical point of view, given fi- given findings for a, we'll call it a a random event or or a or a condition that's not not a standard condition. What type of mitigation would you recommend? Is is there, is there a mitigation need for something like this, or is, I mean, I think, I think early on in the process, I thought I heard you say that you don't, you know, you don't design for shutdowns, right? I mean, maybe I heard that wrong, but I I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so in the event that something is shut down, and I can't imagine it would be shut down for a long period of time unless they're reconstructing the roadway, what, what is the solution? Is there a need, is there, you know, is there a requirement to design for a random condition? I don't know that I understand that. That's, I guess that's before, you know, all due respect to the board. I understand that there may be some conditions that come up, but is there a solution that we're even gonna be developing based on the information we're gathering, I guess is my question, because I just hate to do it if there's nothing that's gonna come of it.
I mean, I mean, for me, Brendan, I'll let you talk too, but I mean, for me personally, I mean, it it's not it's not quite like a unpredictable natural disaster, right? I mean, it does happen with regularity, we don't always know when. And I I think to me, it would be helpful to see just how bad that bad day can be.
Is it typically an ice closure when you guys see it? Because I'm not, I.
Well, I mean, it it closes seasonally, you know, when there's snow and ice, although it's, I mean, they do a pretty good job keeping it open. That doesn't happen that often most of the times, but there are, there's regular tree removal, which I think is what they're doing, like they sort of trim things back in the fall usually. I think that's what's happening Thursday and Friday, and there's, they're always doing work on the road and that kind of stuff. So there's, there's often, and frankly, you know what, there's been more and more problems with accidents on the side of the mountain there that closes it down, which again is even less frequent and less predictable, and, you know, may only be for two hours or something while they tow a car off. But I I I'm curious, I think it's, it's an interesting point, and I think, you know, for people who do drive south out of East Hampton on a regular basis, you see how that all gets funneled in a different way when the mountains close. So I would be, I I, you may, I mean, I think you probably are right, that there's not much to be done to fix it, but I still would wanna know on that really bad day that comes up, you know, maybe six times a year, how bad is that gonna be? on that really bad day that comes up, you know, maybe six times a year, how bad is that going to be? I think that would just help me wrap my head around it. Brenda, do you have something else to add?
Um, you, uh, spoke to some other things, but I guess one of my questions is what Mr. Levesque just said about, you know, what possible mitigation could there be? I mean, given that they aren't really able to mitigate the current situation, um, reading Fussin O'Neal, it sounds like we already need a traffic light there. Um, they predict an increase of thirteen percent traffic as a result of the project. So if these other conditions increase trapping more, and it's already an oversaturated area and there's nothing to mitigate it. That just weighs in on my ability to sort of discern traffic safety issues at that corner. So I just want to share that.
Thank you. Um, so just to clarify that, I, I think the thirteen percent that you spoke of has already been clarified in a response. I'd ask that Jeff respond to that. And Jeff, if you have, if you do have a second, um, could you just kind of describe? You know, what, again, what is that, is there a mitigate, is there mitigation for those days? I mean, is there, is there routing potentially? And I didn't mean it, you know, as a rhetorical question, you know, is this, is there a way to, you know, should, should this, the city consider routing folks in different routes? Uh, you know, is that something to, to try to minimize, uh, potential traffic on East Street? You know, I guess that's, I think that's kind of where, sounds like that's where folks are going with the, with the question. Is that something that typically gets done or am I missing, am I missing the point? Probably am.
Well, just for, for me, I'm just thinking it's challenging enough without people turning in and out, um, a very high traffic area, going in and out of a new, uh, drive-through restaurant. So, which in my mind, sounds like it could exacerbate things. So it's already a challenge and I'm concerned about potential, um, you know, increased safety concerns related to the terms of people who want to just get a Dunkin'. Um, as opposed to other people who are in a really big hurry to get to work. So that's just personally, that's just what I'm thinking about in terms of trying to figure out what it's going to be like at that intersection for potential scenarios that already are happening. Combined with the new entrance and exit to a potential Dunkin'. I don't know if that helps.
No, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
Jeff, is it, can you just speak to the thirteen percent? Cause I think that's important to clarify.
Very important.
No, that's okay. And that's fine. So with the thirteen percent that Fuss O'Neal outlined, comparing both the new and the past by trip. So when you talk about trips to the site, that's one metric. That's the number of folks pulling into and turning out of the site. So that's one metric. The other metric is how many of those folks were already on the roadway to begin with. So when you look at a, a site of this, of this type, you know, it being a Dunkin draws a lot of folks that are already driving by the roadway on their way to work. Um, decide to turn, you know, especially the folks coming southbound on Route five. Um, taking a right onto East Street and making their way into East Hampton. Those folks, all they have to do is turn right in and right out of the site. So it's very easy to move. So, you know, we expect to draw a lot of traffic from that particular movement and, and same goes for folks coming out of East Hampton. Um, you know, approaching the T intersection, they turn left into the site. Go around, they turn left out of the site, which again, you know, we're providing some mitigation and, and the don't block the box, which was, you know, recommended and, and we think that that will, that will create, you know, the acceptable gaps in the traffic stream for vehicles approaching the intersection. So, you know, that thirteen percent, that's, that's, uh, if you use the metric of all the folks going to the site. But if you're really only looking at the new trips to the site, trips beyond what, you know, you know, folks that are getting in their car and driving to Dunkin and then returning the same path that they did originally. So it, it's, when you use just the pass by, the new trips based on the pass by, it's really only like one percent. So we don't expect.
Could you say that a little bit louder, Jeff? Cause I, I think that's important to get clear and you're breaking up. So did you say one percent?
One percent. Yeah. And we noted that in our response as well. If you look at the lot of new trips to the site that's not included as pass by, it's really only a one.
I think that's a big difference. I think that's an important clarification to make. I appreciate that.
No, I, no, absolutely, Rob. And that's a great distinction, especially for a site like this. We expect to see a lot of traffic from folks on the site. I mean, this isn't, you know, a school or, or use like that where everybody that's coming to the school is, you know, a new trip to the roadway. You know, certain roadways that we see that, you know, will never see any traffic. And then, you know, the days that they're at school, there's lots of trips along that road because everybody's going to the school. This is not a case like that where, you know, we're expecting to see all these new folks in sight. We're expecting to draw trips from existing traffic streams.
I was just curious, I just want to dive into that just a little bit. Um, I don't think Fussin O'Neal made a, a third response or a fourth, whatever number they're on. Um, about your response to that question. I did a, a drive of that and I do think, you know, many people coming over two oh two through Holyoke will continue to use the Dunkin on two oh two. But it is in a pretty dense neighborhood and it's kind of two lanes. And I could see some people possibly, once they see this Dunkin', um, you know, as they go up Route five into North Hampton or onto ninety-one. I mean, don't you think it's possible that some people may decide to add this instead? Or, you know, people just coming up Route five, this might be a nicer Dunkin than the one that's there um, on Route five or, you know, whatever. I mean, it's possible that they're, they're going to be more than one percent new trips, right? Or planner bag, are you, do you want to say something about that?
I, I guess I would be curious, Mr. Bandini's response and then I have just a couple, I have a couple of things, yes, related.
Yeah, I mean, i- in short, yeah, we did address, you know, in the original study, we did put that there will be some traffic coming from the south. And when we did our distribution of trips, we certainly looked at the market area and the where folks will be coming and where they're going. We, that's not to say that we're not accounting for any new trips. We're not saying that. We're simply saying that the percentage of trips that are going to be new trips is going to be a small percentage of the entire folks that will come to the site. So that's not to say there won't be any. There's certainly some folks that will come up Route five, turn left at the, at the, into East Street. And then go to the Dunkin and then return as a left-hand turn at the East Street location. So, you know, we've accounted for that in our traffic numbers and provided the, you know, don't block the box. You know, mitigation that we think will help vehicles get in and out of the site. And will, you know, maybe even help a little bit the, um, the existing queue on the, um, the East Street approach because, um, you know, folks will be moving up slowly rather than trying to cram through the intersection, you know, one by one. So, um, that's not to say there won't be any new trips. We're not saying that. It, it's just a very small percentage will be new trips.
And I thought, um, I do, I saw Jeff, you had your hand up and I also see that Steve Severio has raised his hand. I see you too, Jim.
Yes, I apologize. I just want to toss in, you're getting a bunch of people chatting in there. You best do something about that.
Oh, folks, yeah, thanks, uh, Jim. Um, we're not using the chat to comment or ask questions. So if you have a question, there's going to be a public comment period and I will let anybody speak who wants to speak and ask their questions. But let's try to not use the chat for that sort of an issue. Um, but Mr. Bandini, I just want to ask too, if it, I think it was the Holyoke Planning Department that raised in their letter, the idea that, um, there may be people who would have driven south from North Hampton on ninety-one and may actually change their route to, to hit the Dunkin' Donuts on the way. Um, I mean, is that something that, that is taken into account somehow in the system or, or not really?
Yeah, I mean, this, this type of site draws eighty-nine percent of its, of its traffic is pass by traffic. So that eleven, that additional eleven percent, you know, gets modeled in, you know, the size of the facility. And then from the size of the facility, it, you know, folks who go one of three ways. So when you break it down by that, the traffic gets distributed, you know, in a direction. So not only not, not one particular direction is going to see an incre- a significant increase in new trips because there's many different ways to go. Once you leave the site, there's left, right, and then left. So it, there's a very small percentage of trips that are new trips compared to the, the traffic. And whether this location draws additional trips from other Dunkin' remains to be seen. But we have accounted for new trips to the site from all locations. It's not to say that we're saying that there'll be no trips northbound. The traffic study outlines that, you know, there's certain trip distribution from each direction that we believe will still, you know, we'll still, we're still accounting for that amount of traffic to the site.
Okay, thanks. Um, Jeff, do you mind if I go to Steve Severio first? I just wanted.
Yep.
Mr. Severio, you are free to unmute yourself and chime in.
Thanks. I just wanted to, uh, see if I, sec, uh, see if I can clarify, uh, some of this percentage increase. Uh, I, I have to apologize because I think, you know, that this confusion may have, may have been, uh, may have been started by us. Um, we are, we are in agreement. We have no issue with the way that McMahon has, has estimated the, uh, the, the site trips, the pass by percentage, the percentage of new trips on the, on the network and the, the percentage of total new trip increase at the intersection. What I was trying to, um, to bring up, uh, with that thirteen percent increase number was that at an unsignaled T intersection, the left turns from the minor street um, are the, the most, uh, conflicted and the most constrained and the most critical movements at the intersection when you're, when you're trying to determine what the capacity of that minor street approach is, which is the only real capacity calculation you do at an unsignaled intersection. And so what happens is that, no, you don't have a lot of new trips, um, uh, using the intersection, but what, but what you're doing is, um, is you're taking trips that were normally unconstrained through movements, north and south on, uh, Route five. And you're bringing them through the site. So they're, uh, so for instance, from north, from the northbound, I mean, yeah, from the northbound direction, they're turning left onto East Street. They go in and out of the site. And then they come back out and they turn left out of East Street, um, to continue on in the same direction they were going. And so, so if you compare the left turn, that, uh, left turn movement coming out of East Street, uh, before and after develop, development with the, between the no build and the build condition. That's where you see that thirteen percent increase on that one movement for the, for the, for the, uh, eastbound left turns. So that's where that number came from. Um, it's, it's a, it's a different calculation than, than the one we were talking about in terms of the overall increase in traffic demand, uh, on the network as a result of the site. But it's, it's significant because of the, because that is the most critical movement. So that, that movement is impacted more than some of the others, just by virtue of the way that traffic circulates in and out of the site. But that, that pass by traffic circulates in and out of the site.
Great, Steve. Thank you. Um, yeah, Jeff Bag.
Thanks. I don't know if it's exactly what Mr. Severio was speaking about, but I, I want to pull up, um, a table from the original submission. Um, because I think, um, this is a question that I have and need to try to understand um, how it relates and, um, I'm very close. My question and concern is this image here is, uh, table two from the original traffic impact statement, study. And what I'm trying to understand, if, if this is what Mr. Severio just said, is that, um, I would like, uh, Mr. Bandini to walk us through this. Uh, what I, what I see is the two thousand nineteen existing with a three hundred and sixty second delay, um, which I would understand to be existing conditions, turning left off of East Street. And I see the no build at twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-six has increased. Um, and my understanding is that's, uh, residual increased traffic that we might expect as the city grows. But then there's the two thousand twenty-six build scenario, which increases the delay to six hundred and seventy seconds. So my question is, in this table, um, is, is this with or without those pass by trips? That we seem to be debating about.
That includes all of the trips. That includes pass by and.
Okay, so that would be potentially the impact with all the trip.
Correct.
And what is six hundred and seventy seconds translate to? Um, in mi- minutes?
I think it's about eleven minutes.
And, and what's four hundred and ninety-six seconds? Or, or what's existing conditions? What's that three hundred and sixty seconds? What's that amount to?
That's six, I think, right?
That's, um, that was the chart that I, I need, I need more time to reflect on that, knowing that that's all the trips. Um, I think in reality, if we're using traffic data, then that, that is an impact that we should be calculating, um, as a, as an impact from this use at that intersection. Since, since the pass by trip seems to be kind of a vague. And I, I'm, I am, I am, I am sorry because I'm editorializing. I think I've, I, I have struggled with the pass by trips myself. That I think what Mr. Severio said is that, um, they were unconstrained previously and then turning into the site. I think it's just been a riddle, um, I think calculating out the pass by trips. But if that number is, is real, includes all the trips combined, then I think that is a number that we should talk about at some point.
Agreed. Thanks, Jeff. So I guess, um, Mr. Bandini, I think there were some more comments that you wanted to respond to. And we can march through those.
Yeah, I think the only one I wanted to really key in on, and it's going to bring it back to pass by again, was just the comment about the two different land uses relative to, um, you know, their description of the actual site.
Yep.
So one of them was the land use code, um, I had it open here, nine thirty-four versus nine thirty-eight. So, so, uh, and I think the, the, the question was more pertaining to, you know, why did we use one land use code versus the other? And, and the, the short answer was is because, you know, the land use code that Fussin O'Neal had suggested, um, a lot of the uses were not open for breakfast. And it was our contention that we wanted to use the land use code that was open for breakfast. Because, you know, it being a Dunkin, we expect a lot of traffic during that morning peak time. So we didn't want to use a land use code that was pertaining to a site that wasn't open during our forecasted peak time. Um, and again, so, uh, I think that the clarification was more of, you know, why didn't we use one that included indoor seating? Cause again, the Dunkin is going to use the indoor seating. Um, but pass by trip is not available for the land use code pertaining to the one that does have indoor seating. So I think we need to, you know, clarify a little bit more of a response and, and maybe put a couple of figures side by side to get to maybe clarify the statement a little bit more. Again, we just received this response, you know, this afternoon. So, you know, we'd like to respond formally to it.
Yeah, and I, I think that.
Little numbers, maybe in a chart side by side so that you can all kind of.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe we use like a blended number or something for people to consider. But I'm, I just want to make clear for, because, you know, I'm not sure that everyone at home or, or listening along has gone through all of these, um, studies and reviews back and forth. So I, I think the, uh, the idea with the, the ITE, like the traffic numbers for those codes, right? Is that there was basically a Dunkin' drive-through kind of code that doesn't have indoor seating, is that right? And then there's also fast food restaurant that does, but there, there isn't a code for a Dunkin-type establishment that has indoor seating, is that right?
Yeah, and I think, and, and that's, that's really what it is. And, and we felt that this was the most. um, applicable land use code for this type of site. And then the, using the pass by rate that was more, that was most relatable to that particular land use code.
Okay, but you're going to do, you think you're going to do a little more formal analysis of sort of both those codes?
Yeah, I think so. I think, uh, give something a, a little bit more spelled out so that the board can review that official response, and then we can follow up with any other questions at that point.
I think that'd be really helpful, Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. Thanks.
Um, so is there, were there any of the other items that you wanted to respond to tonight? Are you, you're thinking that you want to do more of a formal response to these issues and, and submit it before our next meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think a formal response would be, would be good for, um, you know, for our, our project's a middle, just to kind of, in case there are any other, you know, additional questions the board may have, or if if you want to send any additional questions to Fussin O'Neil, I, I know they had. We responded to their comments and it would give us some time to reach out to Mass DOT as well to kind of at least report back on where we stand with that. Because as Jeff mentioned, you know, the, the results, the analysis results at that intersection, you know, even under existing condition, you know, bear some sort of looking at in some regard. So we at least, at least like to follow up and master T and kind of see where they're at in terms of, you know, potential mitigation for that location.
I think that makes sense. I thi- I mean, one of the hard things, at least in my experience with these traffic studies, is that it only stops at LOSF. So you get situations like this where it's a, it's a bad intersection and it doesn't, I mean, it gets worse. It just doesn't drop a lower standing because there is no lower LOS than, than the F, right? So um, it creates some really weird dynamics where it's easy to say, oh, this went from B to D. But this five or six to eleven on a left turn, you know, it's still an F.
No, you're right. And, and just to kind of follow up with, with, uh, you know, Jeff even alluded to this a little bit, i- is the amount of increase that we see from, from no build to build. And again, you know, the software, you know, what it does is it's almost like an exponential increase when you add, you know, picture it as like a, 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 you know, a, a bucket full of water where you add one drop to the bucket and the water starts spilling over. That's, that's kind of how the model sees it. So a, a lot of times it, it can be a little bit finicky and a lot of times in situations like this, you know, we like to do, um, you know, yield counts in terms of like, you know, finding out if the actual, um, if the model is actually modeling it the way it actually is based on, you know, different factors that it uses. Because we find is the more trips that go through it, the less accurate it actually becomes. You know, that notwithstanding, we do understand the concerns the city has with this location and, and understanding that, you know, this project, you know, is, is, we, you know, would, would, you know, add some traffic to that location. Um, you know, it being, we think that it's a little bit overstated, but we're still understanding of, of the impact that this project may have.
Sure. Thanks. Rob, did you have somebody you wanted to comment on? I saw a hand there.
Yeah, thank you. I just, just to, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that prior to the next meeting, that Jeff, you understand the question raised by Mr. Bag. Um, are you, are you clear with uh, with regard to what he's looking for specifically? So we can address that, or does that need to be clarified?
I think, uh, I think Mr. Bag wanted to discuss the issue related to that. Uh, was there any sort of actual analysis that, that you requested in terms of, you know, how we look at those, at those numbers? Because um, again, as is just said about the analysis, we want to be able to, we want to be able to substantiate, you know, our findings in the study. If there's additional questions on, you know, the merits of how that was calculated.
Yeah, I guess the clarification is, you know, what is your response to, um, Fussin O'Neil's comment that it, that kind of weight will increase um, driver risk or, um, impatience, kind of that kind of idea that it doesn't seem like your comment, your response addressed um, as much as was asked in or re- referenced in, uh, Fussin O'Neil's comments. So I just feel like this is the big issue, in my opinion. Um, if, if Mass DOT can't offer any thoughts or any kind of guidance as to if they're, they're looking, if they would look at this intersection in the future, I think that it's, um, got page seven, you know, of the Fussin O'Neil document that, uh, from October eighth that I'm, I'm kind of just, or seventh I'm looking at.
All right, uh, Jess, could you have something?
Um, just one piece on the intersection too, that, um, you know, it is on behalf of the city to advocate for those projects as well as part of the Mass DOT tip program, which is same project that, like, same process that Union Street went under. So there is some, um, prioritization that happens at the city level for certain elements. And so it's on the city as well to sort of advocate for those, um, intersection repairs as well. Um, just wanted to make a note of that.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, um, a- any other comments or questions from planning board members relating to traffic? I guess with the understanding that we'll, we'll probably have another chance at another meeting. Harry? You're, you're muted, Harry.
All right, this project only has room for eighteen cars, does it not?
What do you mean? Twenty, there's twenty-three parking spaces? Are you talking about the queue line?
If you pull in there and get in line, how many cars are there from the entrance to the exit? Going through there for, from where you get your, let me get your copy. How many cars can fit on this thing? They've gotten in line.
There's twenty cars that can fit in the queue line.
Well, twenty car, okay. I know. How long does it take to get in and out of here?
Actually, Manny has good data on that, Manny.
Yeah, we heard that at a previous meeting. I don't know if he's
I think he's still there. Manny, you still there? Can you unmute?
Yes, I'm here.
So I asked this, I asked this coffee before.
Yes. Yes, it's, uh, it's the time that takes to serve the coffee through the window. So on average is anywhere from twenty seconds to forty-five seconds. Uh, it's the time that you
You're going to be pushing over sixty-five or seventy cars within an hour.
Yep.
And that's going to fit on East Street? That's going to barely get right through all that, all that, all that traffic coming down here on a morning commute? It's going to be able to get right on East Street and go right down and take a left, go down to North Hampton, right? Is that the idea?
No. Hmm, no, I mean, the traffic is already there. So
You only got, you only got room for, for twenty cars from your driveway to the stop sign. From your driveway to Route five, it's only got room for twenty cars.
Yeah, but
I'm sorry.
Through the chair. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, right.
So a standard drive-through in almost any municipality in Western Massachusetts maxes out their requirements at maybe twelve, ten or twelve, oftentimes, oftentimes ten. So we have nearly double or double at least most of the requirements. I forget what specific, what the specifics were to, um, you know, to East Hampton, but I know that we're well over the requirement. So granted, we, we will hope this will be a busy site. We do expect it will be a busy site, but we'll be able to get, you know, twenty cars stacked is double the industry standard. A Starbucks, um, and a Dunk, and a Dunkin' Donuts, just to even look at a site typically wants eight. Um, so I think that's, you know, we're, we're over double. And those are, you know, they want to function. They want the customer experience to be as good as you guys want it to be, because if it's not, folks won't come back.
All right, thanks, Rob. Harry, any other questions?
No, I'm just wanting to get people coming from North Hampton. They take a, take a right and they go up this East Street. And they go to pull in there and there is a room where they're going to go up, up, up East Street further? And then turn around and come back? Is that what they're going to do?
Oh, if the lot and the queue are full?
Yeah. This is just stuff they kind of look at. That's all. I'm just looking at this from a, you know, for something that can happen. That's all.
Yeah, I guess if that were to happen, yeah, I think you're right. I think if you had twenty cars or twenty-one cars stacked, they, you know,
I mean, it's going to happen. You go to the morning jolt that's all backed up. You know, even a Dunkin' Donuts on the summer of East Hampton is backed up in the morning.
Yeah. There will be the option for approximately twenty-three parking spaces. So let's say, you know, minus, uh, employees, there's probably about twenty parking spaces that will be available independent of the drive-through lane. One of the things about this design that's important is we've separated the drive-through lane from the, the internal parking so that people can get in in function while the drive-through lane is stacked back. So that's, that's been key for a lot of our sites. When they, when we integrate a drive-through lane through the parking aisle directly, it can get problematic. That's what you see on North Hampton Street and Holyoke and a couple other places. So this, this design by design, um, separates that. So that will help as well.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, Jim, question?
Harry brought up a really interesting point. Uh, and I was going to add to it. He already hit on it. The Union Street Dunkin' Donuts, I've seen that back up. Gives us a good example close to home. And that Dunkin', what I've seen there that generally happens is uh, usually it's people coming from, you know, Maine down that will kind of queue up in the middle of Union Street is if they want to turn right into that Dunkin'. I'm not sure how long the queue is in that Dunkin' to give us a frame of reference. Uh, the difference between them, I suspect it might be shorter. Uh, but the, the interesting thing that I found is that what inevitably happens is that if someone is still in Union and wants to turn right, people behind them will start honking. And the people will give up and just continue moving. And it sort of solves itself. And I'm not saying it's a good solution. I don't like it at all. It's awful. Uh, but I think that's an, just kind of gives us an interesting view of what actually happens when something like that occurs. So I say.
Yeah, I do think that that queue is much smaller at that one, but i- it's also, um, not maybe quite a dangerous situation for cars on the side of the street either. So it might cut both ways on that, but it is, it is another comparable, I guess. Um, other comments or questions from planning board members? All right, so we will open this up to public comment. So again, if you're on Zoom, if you can raise your virtual hand, that would be ideal. Um, if you want to turn your camera on and wave your physical hand, that works as well. Um, and if you're just calling in, I think a star nine on your phone will raise a hand here. So is there anybody right now who has any comments or questions? See Leah Ewing first up. And if you just make sure, um, just give us your name and address when you start so we can have that for the minutes.
Uh, hi, my name is Leah Ewing. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, I live at sixty-nine Briggs Street, East Hampton. And, uh, I wanted to just touch on two things. First, well, first of all, I should say thank you. I haven't attended a planning, uh, meeting before, so I appreciate everybody taking their time to do this twice a month because I had no idea how long, uh, these processes took. Um, but second, I just wanted to offer two perspectives. Um, the one I kind of mentioned in the chat on accident, uh, as a commuter, um, I've commuted south for thirteen years now, first from North Hampton, um, south to Enfield, and then in the last eight years from my residence in East Hampton. And, um, as a thirty-eight-year-old commuter in town, I know that keeping the major arteries through East Hampton just needs to be a priority for our working-class East Hamptonites, because it's already stressful and already commutes, um, are jammed up often on one forty-one. And when you're taking the left off of East Street, the other direction. When we do have a closure on one forty-one and I have to take a left off of East Street um, at the intersection you're speaking of, it is a nightmare. My thirty-minute commute goes to sometimes an hour and a half to an hour and forty minutes. And I have to call my school and let them know that I'm going to miss my first period class. And it is pretty much solely due to that, uh, East Street intersection onto I ninety-one, um, location. When I lived in North Hampton, I had two carpool buddies and we would often stop at the Dunkin' Donuts that is only a couple miles away from the one that is being proposed. Uh, I do see a lot of people changing allegiance to this new Dunkin' Donuts because that traffic circle is muddied. There isn't a lot of parking and it's hard to get into and out of that Dunkin' Donuts. So if it was me and I'm still living in North Hampton and I have to go by this new one, I'm definitely going to change my plans. Um, so I just want to encourage the board to really think about this time, because once you make a decision to okay this plan, you can't take it back. And even if it only increases traffic thirteen, fifteen percent, you need to have a plan surrounding that because we already have traffic problems all throughout downtown, right? Trying to get through downtown is hard for commuters. Um, so it, you just, I just encourage you to really pause and make sure that your numbers and data reflect real time and real commute time. That's hard to do right now because we're in a time when a lot of people are working from home. So I don't know how your numbers are going to be real. And I understand that, but I think it's super important. Um, the second perspective I want to speak to is just as a mother in twenty twenty, my kids are listening to me in the other room. And, uh, every day on the news, they hear about an endangered species or threatened species. And I read, I did read most of the documents. And in one of them, uh, I forget who it was, but they said, what is the historical or the environmental significance of this location? There's already like an I ninety-one overpass here and there's a lot of not-so-pretty stuff there, right? But it's also where the Oxbow meets the Connecticut River meets the Mount Tom Reservation. And for some reason, we still have this area zoned for business in the year twenty twenty. It's an important wildlife corridor. And it's the end of a bike trail. It doesn't need to be a welcome to Dunkin' Donuts East Hampton location. It can be and remain that important corridor and part of it. And I think, again, it's like this type of decision you can't take back. Right? Once it's, once it becomes more developed, you can't take it back. Could we rezone it for a non-business area? We already have a lot of business areas in the center of town in a walkable center of town. And I just want to conclude with saying, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's going to create bigger headaches and we don't need them. And we already have many Dunkin' Donuts in the area. And I just don't think it's good for East Hampton. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. I think I saw another hand. Is there, um, was it, uh, Keely Savoy Sexton? Did I see a hand up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Um, I, I appreciate everything Leah has said. I'm in a butter and I'm also speaking on behalf of my neighbor Jane, who is in a butter as well from across the street.
Yeah, can you just give us the street addresses just so we have them for the record?
I'm at fifteen. And Jane, are you at ten twelve?
Yes.
Okay, I'm at fifteen East Street and Jane is at ten twelve East Street.
Thank you.
And, um, we are very concerned about the traffic and being able to get out of our respective driveways. Because with this traffic pattern you're describing, it sounds like it's going to add five, ten minutes for us to get out of driveways and we will be listening to honking, as you said. Um, Leah, I think you said honking of people who are impatient to get into the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, Jane's driveway is directly across the street from the proposed driveway and I am directly next door to the proposed driveway. And that traffic pattern is going to be egregious for us. Um, so I wanted to add that. And, and I also wanted to point out that Arborvities are not noise and pollution-abating at all. And that, that proposed border of PVC fencing and Arborvities is going to be directly detracting from from our, our aesthetic ability to appreciate where we are. And I think that's it. Jane, do you have anything else to add? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Jane as well because she's having technical issues.
Sure.
I, I'm just so concerned about being able to get out of my driveway as, as Keely is hers. Um, the traffic flow is unbelievable. I have to wait uh, sometimes three to five minutes to get out of my driveway now. And how would anyone ever be able to And how would anyone ever be able to make a left turn out of, out of Dunkin' to go back onto Route Five without holding up traffic? That was my big, big concern.
Did you all hear that?
Yeah, that's how, and I think it's a good point. You know, they are talking about doing this block the box for the exit from the Dunkin' Donuts, but that doesn't necessarily help anybody who's trying to leave their driveway to the same thing. Keely, I'm curious, you talked about, because you're a direct of butter, sort of the fence and the arboretis not doing a sufficient job screening. Is there anything that you could envision along that border that would make you feel better about the screening from a Dunkin'?
Well, I think a taller fence and more natural plantings of, of native plants would be a definite improvement.
Okay.
I appreciate that view, and I know that's not, that's not a fantastic view. Also, that those dumpsters are no longer there, nor is that car. But what we're talking about here is my residence, and I'm going to be facing that, that speaker, which is going to be blaring into my yard where my kid plays, and our swing set is, you know, five feet from the proposed wall. I know that it's not, it's not a beautiful place. But it's our place and it's quiet now, and the traffic is lower now.
Thank you, Keely. Anything else? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Comments or questions? Again, you can raise your virtual hand or... Looks like we've got somebody else unmuting themselves. Jackie Senkoix.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. If you just give me your address to start, and the sound is great.
It's fifty-one East Street. So I'm on the same side as Dunkin' would be and on the other side of the ninety-one overpass. So I'm a little bit further down. But I have to say that as many of their concerns is getting out of their driveway, Keely and Jane talked about, fifty-one East Street, still have a problem. And it's on the other side of ninety-one. That traffic, when there's, the mountain's closed, and it closes not just for weather, not just for maintenance, but every time there's an accident, you've, and it happens often. And then you've got the opposite when ninety-one gets closed or Route Five is redirected. It's not just one forty-one. You've got the other ones. The traffic, I can sometimes sit and go, I am never gonna get out of here. And we, it's not now, but it's been a considerable number of years since they've worked on the ninety-one overpass. And when they had that construction, you had one lane at some points. So what's gonna happen with that? That's another issue. Getting out even on my little bit ways down the road is still problematic. And as far as the sound goes, that's not gonna interfere with my property. But living on this street, the ambient noise level is loud. Cars don't generate a lot of noise, but the amount of heavy-duty trucks that come up and down our street on a regular basis at six and seven o'clock in the morning, there is a significant amount. You have it on Route Five, and then you've got the train traffic. That's going to be affecting the ambient sound for when those people are taking their orders. And that's it.
Thanks, Jackie. You did raise another point that I think the Holyoke Planning Department raised about sort of how traffic, the whole route, you know, whether it's East Street, Route Five, ninety-one, they all kind of, it, it fluctuates based on where there's roadwork and where roads are closed. I do think that that's like a valid consideration to think about is what happens on that same route when ninety-one is closed or, or down to one lane or something. So thank you. Anyone else? Public comments, questions, or members? Brenda, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I have a comment.
I'll take that, too.
Okay, um, I just wanted to follow up with what Leah Ewing had mentioned about the Highway Business District. So I took another look at the Highway Business District Report from twenty thirteen, and I was really surprised to see four references related to the Highway Business District Zone on East Street. And if you look at a zoning map, it's a really odd section. It's about eight properties. Everything around it is R thirty-five. The zoning overlay on that access map indicates the former Oxbow shop and the bike and ski are highway business, but I looked up their property cards and they're listed as R thirty-five. So if the property cards are the legal source, those two are R thirty-five. So...
Shout you out.
Excuse me?
I think someone, I think someone was accidentally unmuted.
Sounds like it. Okay, if I can continue. So some of those recommendations in the Highway Business District Report were, on page three, the executive summary states, quote, "A small, isolated area at the intersection of East Street and Route Five that is currently zoned highway business needs to be reviewed and appropriate alternative uses or rezoning should be considered," end quote. The findings on page twenty-one of the report state, quote, "The land on East Street currently zoned for highway business should be rezoned. The highway business zone land at the corner of East Street and Route Five has been identified as a concern. This is because the zoning is inconsistent with surrounding land uses. Careful considerations should be given to rezoning this land to a more suitable designation, such as neighborhood business," end quote. So this came up before. It's come up before in twenty thirteen about how odd that section is. So the Highway Business District Report was done by a large committee, but I think by the city, and it can be found online. Mr. Bag can tell you where to find it. But, so I just wanted to share that. And then I also had another thought over the weekend. The great Mount Tom North Trailhead Project. I don't know if people know, but Kestrel and the city jointly purchased twenty-three acres about a half mile from the proposed Dunkin'. And I was reading some of the materials that announced that, and Kestrel, their website said, quote, "The public benefits of this project will include a safe trailhead with parking on East Street easily reached from the Manhan Rail Trail, Route Five, East Hampton, and North Hampton." And I just started to think about what's going on in this area in terms of open space commitment and really trying to connect the Manhan Rail Trail with the new trailhead. And, you know, I, I don't know. I just could see more conflict happening there, especially if that trailhead conservation area becomes an event space, which was one of the proposals. I don't know where that went. But, so I just thought, wow, okay, this is really complicated. And there's a lot going on in that area that's trying to encourage accessibility, pedestrian, and biking use. And I just really worry about the safety of, of everybody as, as those areas kind of all meet in that proposed area. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Great, Brenda. Thanks. Other comments or questions at this point?
Just want to clarify one thing, and it's, I don't know if it's super important, but I, the only thing that member Sallyer said that I think is worth correcting is the assessor's card often can be just flagrantly out of whack. The, the truest measure of what the zoning is is the zoning map. So like through that process, whenever that got created as highway business, it was approved as a map, and that would be the official, that's the official thing, and the assessor's records often contain errors. So I just, that was, you know, that was really the only thing I just wanted to correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I didn't know which was definitive. Thanks, Jeff.
Uh, Jim?
Some really interesting points are being raised, and one of them's triggering a memory of something that's come up for me in the past. And, and I'm bringing this to you, Jeff, to kind of remind me. My memory in this is that, while I agree that section of zoning is quite awry, and it's something that, you know, I think we may have come to review at some point. When someone makes an application, they make it as to the zoning at that time. And even should we want to make modification or propose to the city council or whatever we might do, that a process begin, we have to consider this based on the zoning that it is. And they have the right to the zoning as it's stated now. And no matter how much I might want to look at that differently, I have to consider it as highway business currently. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, and I see, you know, Shepherd's, and I think it's important to understand that that report exists. But yes, I think basing a decision, for example, to not approve the project based on that report's recommendation that is not, has not been acted on, I think it would be, that's a difficult reason to make this decision. It's, it's certainly informative, I think, depending on the outcome of which way this goes and what happens next. You know, it's, it's kind of the perpetualist of what, what things should be considered for changing in the future. I mean, I think we're accumulating a long list, but I do, if I understood what Members of US is saying, I do think that basing a decision on this application, on, on fact that it said that it could, it should be changed, I think would be, I think it'd be troublesome for, for the decision to hinge on that. If I can say it that way, I think there might be other things, but it's important to note that that does exist and has been looked at, but...
I took Brenda's, I don't want to speak for Brenda, but I took her point as it was, you know, we, I think we said at the very first hearing on this, you know, this is a really interesting area because it's, you know, there's a substation from the power, and you're right under ninety-one, and, and there's all these industrial issues. And then there's also the Oxbow and the boat ramp and Mount Tom and the Connecticut River. So like, it's a really strange dichotomy of sort of like residential and natural resources and a business zone. And frankly, you know, I can't think of much more industrial use than kind of a power substation that's right there, you know? So that's at least what I heard Brenda saying is that also it's, it's kind of an anomaly in our zoning that it's non-contiguous and it comes up out of nowhere, and that there have been questions raised in the past about whether it's even appropriate going forward. But I think, Jim, you're right that, I mean, it's zoned highway business right now, and that's the zone that we're evaluating. But it's a complex situation, too. Okay, any other comments or questions? Public, I thought, Ms. Ewing, did I see you want to chime in again, or are you all set? Oh, you're muted. Sorry.
I just had a question, and, and it doesn't necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily relevant anymore, but how often do you rezone areas? Like, are we up for rezoning anytime soon?
So the process, zoning is done by the city council. We have a role that we can play to sort of initiate zoning changes. But once the, I mean, I'll speak broadly. I mean, the city is completely zoned now, right? Like, every property falls into a zone in maybe even more than one, if there's overlay districts and stuff. But, so then it really becomes sort of either situations where more recently we've done things like move a zone boundary, maybe one building up. I think that the end of Cottage Street by where Corcello's is, that building had been residential, and then we moved, the city council moved the boundary up a little bit. So that sort of like minor tweaking happens, but it really is sort of like, I don't want to say squeaky wheel, but until there's an issue that someone raises, I mean, there isn't really like a regular constant analysis of where the zones are and what they should be. Sort of comes and goes depending on the interest of the city and the public and various boards and committees.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. It may or may not be related, but that report is from twenty thirteen. So for some number of years, it has been in existence, and it's just, it, it takes something to, it, it always takes something to move something forward for, for whatever that reason might be, but it, it doesn't just happen like on a schedule or anything.
Right. Mr. Levesque, I see you've come back on screen. Did you have something to respond to or add?
You know, based on the zoning discussion that you're having, I think it's important to note, as you, I think you have all noted that this is an interesting area. You know, the, a couple of things going on here. This is a, again, a property that's zoned for business. We're right off of Route Five. We're right next to a pump station. There's a garage building directly across the street. There was a former junk collector as part of the property, a residential property that arguably, I mean, I, I don't know what you consider appropriate for residential. But I would argue that against Route Five, the right-of-way for Route Five in, in, in East Street is probably not the most advantageous or logical place for residential. I think the zoning that is there is appropriate based on the amount of traffic. You know, the discussion about the light that, that we're talking about, there's gonna be a, a traffic light. Maybe people like to live next to traffic lights with a lot of traffic in front of them. But realistically, I think this is a very appropriate business location. I think it is logical. And, you know, as far as the environmental concerns that have been raised, we're in an upland area. We're not in the floodplain. We're not in a bordering land, and I'm sorry, we're not in a BVW. We don't have any wetland impacts, and we're really redeveloping an existing site. And frankly, I think we're cleaning up a site that will be at one of the intersections of, of town where you're coming into town. So it'll be cleaned up, and it, it was, and in my opinion, is unsightly. The house isn't awful, but certainly the property next door was. And, you know, we're gonna be cleaning it up. So, you know, so while we're all talking about what the appropriateness is for this site, I think we all need to be, you know, also look at the, the flip side of the coin and understand that may not be a great spot for residents. That's all.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I do think it's fair to say that I wouldn't assume that because that, the zone never changed in the last seven years, that that was in action as opposed to a conscious decision by people who had looked at it. That's fair. Keely, I see unmuted. Do, do you have another comment or question?
I do, because I live next to that junk collector. I, I want to point out that when he has had cars blocking his driveway, it makes it incredibly hard to take a, a left turn out of that driveway. And it, it concerns me greatly, the visibility, although I know, I know all the studies have been done. It concerns me greatly that I will not be able to take a, a safe left turn out of my driveway if there's traffic there. And that junk collector honestly wasn't a terrible neighbor. Yes, he had, it, it's an unsightly, it's an unsightly garage. I'm not gonna argue that. But it was a neighbor. And, and I'm, I'm concerned that having a business there will greatly deteriorate the, our quality of life.
Thank you. I, I just have one more question. Jeff Bandini, are you still there? Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. I'm here.
So one of the things that was raised by a couple of different people, and I'm curious just about sort of traffic study protocol, but where I think, at least anecdotally, most of us feel like on both Route Five and on East Street, people don't tend to observe the speed limit. And I'm wondering if there's a way, I think the most relevant way that that impacts stuff, other than the idea of just sort of coming around a corner and finding a line of stopped cars, is how that impacts the site distance, because I think that's based on the speed of the oncoming traffic. And I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of, that in the industry, you would sort of beef up those numbers or, or look at sort of what the speed can be and, and how that impacts that. Do you guys do that at all, and how would you sort of take that into account?
Yeah, so basically, you know, like you said, you know, Ashdo puts, publishes, you know, material on site distance criteria. And, you know, what we normally do is compare the amount of available site distance to the speed limit. And in certain cases, we can look at the amount of available site distance and then find the amount of speed that that corresponds to. And for this site in particular, you know, we tried to locate the driveway as far away from the intersection as possible. You know, and that was done really twofold, and the first one is to be, you know, extend that, you know, knowing that there's an existing queue from the East Street approach. You know, vehicles turning left out of the site, we want to make sure that if that queue extends two hundred and fifty feet from the stop line, that folks can turn left out of the site. But we also wanted to locate it there so that vehicles turning right from Route Five southbound had that maximum amount looking left. Route Five southbound had that maximum amount looking left. Any close, you know, if we had moved the driveway to the opposite side. Of the site boundary, let's, let's just say, then folks coming around that corner, taking that right. The vehicles taking the left out of the Dunkin' Donuts would be right there. But since it's on the other side of the site, that was done intentionally to maximize that amount of site distance. And so vehicles coming around that corner. You know, we use the thirty mile an hour speed limit, you know, in actuality, it's, you know, folks coming around that corner and we understand it's the radius is a fairly large radius. To accommodate trucks. But you know, twenty, twenty-five miles an hour around that corner. And you know, we understand folks are accelerating, but we use that thirty miles an hour. Given that criteria, that amount of site distance is sufficient. Now, you know, looking the other way, you could certainly make a case that vehicles are traveling faster along East Street. And, you know, anecdotally, that may be true, that, that may be for the entire segment of East Street. But in actuality, folks traveling eastbound approaching the Dunkin' Donuts driveway. You know, they should be decelerating as they approach the intersection with East Street, you know, especially if the queue is as long as. You know, as, you know, has been observed by, you know, a lot of the folks. On this call and through the board and even through our own traffic, existing traffic analysis, so. You know, we felt that the thirty mile an hour speed was appropriate for that location. We could certainly look into, you know, the amount of site distance that we have. And you know, how fast vehicles could still be traveling and meet that minimum Astro criteria.
I think that'd be really helpful. I mean, for me that, cuz I think that it, there is. It's, it's a high-speed area and it is, I think you're right, that people do probably slow down more on that turn than they do if they're coming the other direction on East Street, but. I'd be curious to see that, I think that if that's something that's available, that would be helpful. Okay. Any other comments or questions, board members, public?
I would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Michelle Alterkin and I live at two eleven East Street and I. Wanted to share about the traffic situation. I turn left. Onto Route Five from East Street to go to work every day and it takes each car. Sometimes up to five minutes. To make that turn, so I'm very concerned about the, the backup that would take place and. The abutters to the proposed site have each shared that it takes them three to five minutes sometimes to turn out of their driveway. And so in theory, it would take each car. That's coming out of Duncan to also take three to five minutes each and so. These numbers just aren't adding up and I'm just very, very concerned. That I'm not gonna be able to get to work on time. My commute's already half an hour plus and. Any, any increase to that is just gonna be untenable. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Jim, did you have a comment or a question?
I wanted to ask about process here, Jesse, since we seem to be winding this down for the evening, it's clear we have to have another meeting. There was some talk, Mr. Bandini, about did he understand the expectations of what we need next? I think maybe we should touch on that just one more time and maybe just make sure that. Jessica and, and Rob know what to deliver for next meeting and when can we meet that?
Yeah, so I've been keeping a list, just to be clear and let me know people if I missed it, but so one was, I think we're still waiting on detail on the retaining wall. I think was gonna come for our next meeting. We didn't get into sort of the nuts and bolts of design changes or architectural style. We talked a little bit about that Williamsburg location, but I think that's probably a topic for the next meeting. It sounds like. The applicant's gonna communicate with the fire department on the fire truck issue, which will drive all of this. We had an agreement, I think, on the trash pickup delay till eight, so that's off. I think. Mr. Bandini was gonna look at first sort of an analysis of the LUC and the ITE codes. And do some comparison there. He just said he would talk about speed analysis for the site distance. And then I think he wanted to do a more formal response to the latest round of comments. On the rest of the traffic stuff, but that was what I wrote down. I don't know if any other planning board members had anything else. Chris?
Yeah, just that, and I know the applicant already said they would be doing this, but. As they get into the architectural design, the renderings, I'd like to see renderings and now I don't really care about the, the bike path side, now that all the trees are staying. But I'd still would like to see what it looks like from East Street and from Route Five. With the, with the wall and the, what all the shrubs that will propose to remain, so we can see kind of what the finished product would look like.
And the only other thing I had made a note about this, and Jeff, maybe you can, Jeff Bag, maybe you can help with this, so the. The city engineer appeared to sign off on the. The stormwater management plan. But I'm just curious, it looks like it's dated October twelve, so that's after the revisions to the parking lot and everything were made, right? So I think that would be a current plan or was the stormwater plan ever updated to address the changes to the site? It was? Okay, so that should be fine if he, if he, as long as he looked at the most, the most current plan, I just wanted to make sure of that before we let that.
I think he was sent the plan ahead, ahead of the packet dates, so I think he had the new plan to.
Excellent.
Two quick, two quick things, so, you know, I. Just, I'm not sure. I apologize, I'm not sure how to reference this, but. The. Documented dated October seventh, I, I just wanna, I guess, ask the board. There's the, the question between the thirteen percent increase and the one percent. Which I understand there, there is a response from the applicant's engineer. But there's just two lingering components to that that I, I don't, I guess I don't have clarity on whether the board thinks it wants more. Which is the, the potential increase in wait time could exacerbate driver behavior. And I don't know, I, I guess it's, it's a question to the board whether that's something that, that the McMahon response does not talk about that. And the other is this Mass DOT discussion, which I think is.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, so those two things, I guess, just to the boards. Weighing in on that and it relates to right now, the relationship that we have between the applicant. And the peer reviewer, I, I want to have full disclosure that, you know. Fussin' O'Neil has indicated that they're, they've achieved, they've maximized, they've utilized their funding that was allocated in this first. Agreement, so, you know, I think we need to have the board determine that this. You know, additional information would be worthy of the peer reviewer continuing to provide services. I think the applicant would need to be agreeable to that. I, I think without the applicant being agreeable. We would get, potentially get to the next meeting and the board. May or may not have the professional review necessary to, to quantify or corroborate it, so. I don't know how to brush this discussion, I'm brushing it here. Cuz I think we kind of need the applicant's agreement to continue. To allow Fussin' O'Neil to, to continue their review. I think that's an important thing to identify. I, I don't know if I'm sure, but I think it's important to identify now.
So Jeff, so Jeff, this is Manny. So I'll make it easy for you, yes, of course.
Okay.
We're, we're this far into the project, I mean, what are we gonna do, just say no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that's clarity on that part, so then just these other elements that we, we talked about.
Yeah. And so then I guess the question, Rob and Jeff Bandini and Jessica, based on what we've just outlined. You know, I think. We're looking at. November twenty-fourth, looks like our next. Available meeting, but I wanna make sure that gives you guys enough time to do. All of this, I don't wanna, I mean, you may wanna be rushed more than that, I don't know, but that's, that's the next available date it looks like, so, does that give you enough time?
I think so. The one question I have is probably, Jeff, you wanna give me a nod if that's enough time for you? Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense, you know, we'll need some time to gather, you know, the coordination with Mastot and, and the additional data request.
We do have a meeting, we, we're gonna have a December first meeting as well, I think, so if you want more time, we can give you an extra week, but. I just, I, I'd rather not set the twenty-fourth and then have to bump it. Cuz we've got a lot of public interest and I don't wanna push that, so it's easier to do December first. We can do that as well.
And I, and I think it's relevant, we, we wanna make sure that if there is additional materials that Fussin' O'Neil can get it with enough time to, to have reasonably, reasonably enough time to review it, so. You know, that puts that date a little bit earlier than the twenty-fourth as well for.
Yeah, and a good, another point is I'm not sure how long the photo, the, the. Photo realistic or the, you know, representation that Chris is looking for might take, so. I'm expecting that you'll all be in the holiday spirit a little bit more in December anyway, right?
Sounds likely. Alright, so December first works better for you folks? Just to be safe.
Manny, are you okay with that?
Ah, yes, I mean. We gotta have the, to get the information anyway, so.
Alright, thank you. Jim, did you have another question or are we getting a jump on a motion?
Well, that too, I'm guessing it's gonna be at six P M. Is that the first item on our agenda on the first of December, Jeff? Yeah, okay, I, I wanted to.
Jessica's got a question first.
I just, before you, before you go to continue, if you, if there's any information that you'd like to provide us in regards to the design and the architectural style. So that, that doesn't just sit for a month, more than a month. And, and I can reach out to the architects and try to start coordinating something with them, that would be helpful. To have that information, cuz otherwise there's nothing, all I have on the list is design, architectural style, and since we didn't talk about it in detail. If there was some information, some indication of maybe what you're looking for, that, that would be nice.
Yeah, so I think the one, Brenda had compared the Williamsburg store, so that might be worth starting with and Jeff, did you have a comment, question, suggestion?
Yes, briefly. Cuz I, I would like, you know, I think Brenda's input is, is very meaningful, but I would like the rest of the board to just look at. A couple of the details that I think. I am not an architect. But. This is just a document that I had prepared for some previous project, but I think. There are certain things with the Williamsburg Dunkin' that are also showing on the North Hampton Street one, so the color of the windows. The facade details, the trim. The dormers, the cupola, the lighting. And then the signage, right, so, and then the two other things, and I'm not trying to be overly picky, but I'm just trying to. Respond to the question is. I noticed that in both of the. Building designs, there's this, on the building right. There's, and it's shown on the proposed elevations, this is, I wanna walk out, whether it's a freezer or something, but that fence detail. You know, as an example, is not shown on the proposed plans, but this has fence detail. The trim work, so now I'll repeat myself, but I, I, I think the idea is. To make it a little bit more in line with, with this architectural design. And I don't know if that's clear, but that's kind of the goal.
I think that makes sense.
So Jeff, so just one thing and unless you guys mandate the colors. It's gonna be a hard sell, I mean, we can, we can bring it back to Duncan. But the new, the new colors they have. Which is, it's the new, you know, like every fast food or every, you know, company is going to the whites and, and the grays and, and the graphite and all of that. Color. So unless the town makes it a mandate that we do want, you know. Warm colors, like the tones that we had before. We knew something from you guys saying that, that's what the colors that we. We want the, the building to be. So I can go and says, okay, the, the only way the town's gonna prove this is if we do something. Fairly close to what we have on, you know, Haydenville.
Yeah, I, the only problem, we can't really make that determination now, I mean, I think that we could. Come to the meeting on December first and if everything else satisfies every board member, we could vote for it and make it a condition then. And you can either do it or not, or we could. You could tell them that that's certainly the board's stated preference right now and see if that gets, I don't know, or, or. Or you can come back and show us the best thing you can do without Duncan telling you to get lost and we'll see if that satisfies enough members.
Okay, so. If we, if we, the only, the only reason why I said this is, I don't wanna, we can, we can go back and we can, you know, change the layout of the building, we can, we can do some things. The reason why we, we did it that way was to kind of mimic. Where the tenon bagel had in down, you know, downtown was kind of. You know, looked like a train station, trolley station, whatever with the, you know, with this, you know, those ornaments, not ornaments, but there were those. Accenture pieces that we put on the building, that's the reason why we, we went that route. I mean, obviously, if you want something more like. What you had in North Hampton or we have, North Hampton Street or we have in, in Haydenville. I mean, we can go down that road too, as long as we can agree that, don't get stuck on a color, let's put it this way, don't get stuck on a color just because we're gonna propose it to you guys. Most likely on a, you know, white and gray color.
Yep, I, I didn't mean to interject, I'm sorry, I, I put up the image. This was the only image I could find quickly for the, the Polio. So this, if, if I understood, this would be the colors that you. Are. Proposing to keep, I, I think this feature along the bottom. Is called a brick water table and so. You know, I think this is a, the design is a little tricky, but I, I just wanna have this image up for a moment, so the colors show. The windows are white and I think that was, is a, it's a detail, but. If this, does this image show here, let's see, am I still?
This is actually a silver, Jeff, not to correct you, but it's a, it's a silver, it's a silver aluminum that they use.
Okay. Just to contrast that with the North Hampton Street in East Hampton. You know, it's the window colors and it's those dormers. You know, those are the things that I'm seeing that are different between these two and so. It's, I don't know if the board has other thoughts, that's the best I can do to kind of translate the difference between the elevations that we are showing as proposed versus. Something we already have in East Hampton and we're not even gonna look at the Union Street one.
So just to be clear on that fencing on the top, Jeffs, just so you understand that that's, that's a screening for the rooftop units and it doesn't look like this one, it looks like it has rooftop units. On proposed north elevation, but it doesn't look to have that fence screening, so typically.
Yeah, it's something that can be that on, we, we have that even in North, in Haydenville, we have it in the back and we have, we do that just as aesthetics anyways.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Sardina, please. Are you gonna participate in the Duncan Green Achievement Program for this building or would you consider that? Okay.
We have other locations already on it, so.
Great, okay.
Thanks. Rob, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that what we could probably do is prior to the next meeting, if it was okay with the planning board. Coordinate with the bad, try to work out some of the details that we discussed, so that in the event that. A condition needs to be crafted, at least it would cover the architectural details. In the, in the potential colors that need to be addressed, so that in the event that what we come back with isn't the perfect solution. That the condition could be detailed enough that it could cover.
I think that sounds like a good idea. Jeff, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
This is Chris, I have a quick one. I just would, it's regarding the colors, I, you know, if you drive around East Hampton. I can't, there's countless white Colonials with black shutters. So I'm not necessarily concerned about the colors, they're white and black and, but I, but I do definitely agree with Jeff, the, the cupola. You know, all the different architectural details are really important, so if there's a way to kind of mimic that old colonial feel of East Hampton. I, I'm more concerned about that than the colors.
I agree with that. Call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready, Jim, for a motion.
I believe we said, and I'm just confirming before I motion, December first is six, correct?
Correct.
A motion to continue till December first at six P M, American Dream Real T L C, seeking a special permit stormwater management permit. In the Highway Business District to build a Dunkin' Donuts.
Seconded.
Alright, voting to continue to December first, Jim.
Aye.
Brenda.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I am an I. So we will see everyone back here on December first. I wanna thank everybody who, who contributed to the conversation on all sides, everywhere involved, so thank you very much. Public input is always helpful and Rob and Jessica and Jeff and Steve, thanks for taking time out of your night to come too. Thank you. Alright, and we are not done yet, folks. So we have a few items of new business, mostly administrative here. First one is the one twenty-one A application for Ferry Street. Jeff, you sent out a huge document. You wanna give us a quick description of sort of, I know you and I have talked the process through a little bit, but what's gonna happen?
Yeah, thank you, it, it's a new type of application that we are receiving a transmitter from the mayor's office. It is. Um, it is um, a multi-step process. And um, the statute that operates this whole thing is this chapter one twenty-one A, and then um, that sets for some of the mechanical steps that need to happen, the the logistics, so to speak. And then um, there's this ultimate document, which would be referenced as like a six A agreement. And and ultimately, what's happening is the developer uh, for the one Ferry Street project is seeking a tax exemption. So i- in very general terms, are seeking to pay less taxes to help facilitate um, the continued development of the property. Um, and it's quite complex, but what happens is the first step is a joint public hearing between the planning board and a city council. Um, because we operate under the rules that apply to a city. Um, so so as of right now, that is set for November fourth. Um, I do not have enough information at the moment to know exactly what time that will be, because the the city council does have another s- uh, public hearing set.
Is it the full city council, Jeff?
Correct, a full city council and the full planning board um, will convene as a public hearing to get um, the presentation from the developer. Um, and there will be an opportunity for questions, and I tried to allude to this, uh, it, some of the questions may not be able to be answered um, at the public hearing. And one of the reasons is because the public hearing is the first introduction. Um, it it begins a timeline for this whole process to 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 unfold. Um, the finance subcommittee, I believe, is going to be the the city council component that will pull off and have separate meetings about the financial element of it. Um, and then the planning board will have to um, you know, convene separately a different day and time to talk about a certain set of findings that it would have to make. Um, it's all, it's it's enumerated in the packet, but you know, essentially um, there has to be some public benefit of the project overall. Um, and as a, by way of an example, there, you know, is the project um, blighted? Would the development improve the neighborhood or the site? Um, would it provide um, economic development benefits? So there's a, and then would it meet the goals of the master plan? And there's a series of things that we will walk through. Um, ultimately, the planning board will issue a report, and it goes to the city council. Um, the planning board has forty-five days from this joint public hearing to um, issue that report. So I would do expect there to be one or two, I I, that's what I expect, one or two planning board meetings devoted to kind of talking it through. The developer should should be expected to come to a planning board meeting and talk through if if the planning board has questions. Um, and then I will assist, obviously, with with writing out findings for the board's review, and then ultimately send them back to council. Um, and then city council will take the planning board's report, and ultimately will take a report from the finance subcommittee. And we'll finally convene one more time, and the city council issues a report to the mayor. Um, at the end of the process, the the city council will be the, is the body charged with um, recommending that the mayor approve the six A agreement, um, approve it with modifications, or for if there were reasons to to reject it. Um, I did help put together the packet, so you know, I think it's broken down into an application. And it's not short, uh, but you can start to read through the application and understand that the developer proposes a certain project, which is described. Um, and then there are the criteria, their 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 belief, why it meets those basic conditions, and is it should be eligible for this tax exemption. Um, and then there's the six A agreement, which will ultimately be the technical document that will exist um, for the period of time that this is in play, which is proposed to be twenty-five years. Um, so so that's kind of a quick summary. Um, you know, I would, I did encourage, I I can receive questions. Um, we just don't wanna reply all at this point, uh, because it's gonna be a subject that the planning board will take up in hearing. Um, I will say that I'm not sure I will be able to answer all the questions, but if if there's a way that I could um, begin to make sure that the question gets addressed over time, then that's that's my, you know, one of my goals. Um, so that's kind of the the quick summary um, at this point, and I don't know if I covered enough, but.
I think that's good. I mean, this will be a new experience for most, if not all of us, and we'll um, we'll we'll figure out how to do it once we have that first meeting.
I'd like to add, I think the document was well put together. Basically, everything you said I got from the document, uh, quickly accessible. It was a lot well done, that must have, uh, it must have been rough. Um, you know, I definitely came away with some questions from it, and I'm sure we'll talk about it when the time comes.
Right, and just one more caveat, i- and just to make sure that it's clear, I mean, anyone who's listening, we, you know, it the packet that goes that went to councils, like, let's say it's fif- fifty pages or something, which is a lot, but there is uh, in a, a set of exhibits which results in about six hundred pages. And I just want people to not be too alarmed, because in interestingly, like one example of the exhibit is our entire master plan got included as an exhibit. So that's, that's two hundred pages right there. Um, the entire Mass Works grant application, which was submitted twenty eighteen, is in there, and that's, let's say that's eighty pages. Um, and then there's, there's other documents that are just just large, but you know, we, they're not um, really all relevant at the same time, so don't be.
It's a criteria of being on the planning board that we love reading, have no.
Yeah, right. All right, Jeff, thank you. Um, unless anybody has any other questions.
I motion to adjourn.
Oh wait, there's more, there's more.
November, December meeting schedule.
I'm eager.
So Jeff, you you circulated that email, and we just added um, this Duncan to the December first meeting.
Right.
But I don't know what else you wanted to talk about with that schedule.
Um, it's really just to acknowledge that the planning board is going to be busy. Um, with the addition of the one twenty-one A on top of um, the project that just concluded, the Lawville project, and then um, there are other applications. So it's, it, I'm really respectful of the amount of time that planning board members have spent so far, but it does, with the addition of the election um, was was factor number one, then um, the the, there's a holiday in November and a holiday, a a couple holidays in December. And so it it pushes our meetings together. So just um, as as the, as the new planner who's on the call and gets introduced in a minute, we we wanted to look at the schedule, because it it, there could be cases where we have a back-to-back week, two weeks back-to-back to to make sure we're covering all the business, because the next week becomes a holiday. And so um, I think within the next week, we should be able to refine the schedule so that's more clear, but I'm just trying to preview that there's, there's quite a bit coming. Um, and and there's no way to avoid it, I guess.
All right, we will stay tuned for that. Um, open space. Oh, what was that?
I just said Christmas with the planning board.
Yeah, no kidding. Uh, open space and recreation plan update. Is this Jeff or is this Brenda?
I don't know, Brenda, do you wanna take a quick shot at an overview, and then we'll, we'll just tag, it's not, it shouldn't be too too long, but there's, there's, there is an item here.
Yes, um, so I think the um, committee's really making some progress. We're gonna meet again next week. Um, we're focusing right now on the public meeting and preparing for that. And um, they're monitoring the survey results. Last week, I think there was around three hundred, Jeff. Yeah, so um, they're coming in. Um, so be sure to fill out the survey if you haven't yet, get your friends and family to do it as well, please. We appreciate it. Um, and then I think we can speak to the other issue, Jeff, on the agenda. But I wanna thank um, Jesse and James for helping to answer some of my questions about updating the former plan, and Jamie Webb was really helpful too. So thanks to you all, and of course to Jeff. Um, okay.
Always, always fun to go down memory lane on things you did on the planning board four years ago, or didn't do as the case may be. Um, all right, excellent. How about comprehensive housing plan update? Who's that, Jeff?
Yep, so it's just, this was an opportunity to just give some kind of quick updates at least. So, you know, we um, just received a draft of um, the Housing Production Plan. So as part of this comprehensive housing plan, we, the Housing Production Plan is the city's affordable housing plan. So it provides data, and then it provides an outline of ways to achieve more affordable housing. Um, and it and it's really important for the planning board as we get a little bit more involved to to have the planning board aware that this document will exist, and it'll set forth some goals. Um, possible zoning changes or things to consider moving forward to encourage more affordable housing units to be built. Um, and then the project will shift to sort of a market rate analysis, um, a little bit more housing, more broad. Um, and um, one of the, so the beauty is because the consultant had collected all the data about housing in general and made the the affordable plan, they then used the same data to to do projections and look at you know, issues or concerns that may or may not be preventing us from from buil- building more housing in general. Um, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty encompassing um, set of um, tasks. But one thing that I know has been on the horizon and and is is something that I do expect people to pursue is to make accessory dwelling units um, easier to build. Um, and one of the the ways that has been discussed, and one of the things I expect to see in this report is to remove the special permit process for an accessory dwelling unit, um, and allow it to be done with a building permit. Um, in in order to do that, there would be some criteria that would get set up in the zoning, so there are more like per- performance criteria get established. Um, but that's all zoning change work. So that's um, work that would come through the planning board and ordinance, and then ultimately go to city council. So there's a fair amount of work um, expected to come out of this. Um, and then it'll be interesting to see sort of who and how, um, which which items come to the forefront and get and get moved to actually be considered. So um, what I expect is the Housing Production Plan to get presented to city council at one of their December meetings. Um, and then, so I will try to clue the planning board members in to to, you know, maybe encourage you to watch that meeting. Um, if that makes sense, I know it's gonna be busy, but um, that's kind of that update.
Perfect. Je- Jeff, do you know off the top of your he- head when the last um, housing plan was done?
It was either two thousand, it was either two, uh, either two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
They're on a, I think they're on a five or seven, so I think they're on a seven-year schedule for update.
All right, and the award for most patient person on this Zoom call goes to Curtis. Welcome aboard, Curtis.
My pleasure, everyone. Uh, my name is Curtis Weeman. Uh, I've been hired on as the new assistant planner, um, complimenting the existing staff rather than replacing any existing person. Uh, I was recently of the city of Holyoke where I, my projects that I finished was Arlebek Associates completing the Dunkin' Donuts on Hampton and Pleasant Streets. So this feels, I I'd like to thank the planning board here for starting on a, on a note that I could really, you know, easing me in on a topic that I feel very comfortable with.
Excellent.
And Curtis, you have some, you you were aware of cannabis projects in Holyoke as well, right? That was something that you you saw come through?
Yeah, I I don't want, uh, I, I wanna signal that I'm open for any questions for the board. Um, I corresponded officially with the board at my at work email. I further wanna say that my phone number at work is extension one fifty, so the same number that you call everybody else with. I'm more than happy to receive individual calls if anybody would like to discuss these things with me. However, let's not say I won't answer that question now. It was more to say in general, if you had specific questions, I'm also happy to take them there. Um, with Holyoke, I was primarily in charge of the license board as well as responding to applicants for uh, marijuana special permits. I was not the only person involved with that. Obviously, uh, principal planner Jeff Burkott was also involved. Um, we helped various marijuana projects come through, as well as a lot of motor vehicle projects, um, both of which require special permits, either the planning board or city council. Um, and then a a large number of other projects, including but not limited to the redevelopment of uh, North Hampton Street. Um, and then a, a, a large number of other projects, including but not limited to the redevelopment of uh, North Hampton Street. The um, the lynch school redevelopment and the Hampton and Pleasant Dunkin Donuts, uh, both of which were contentious projects in Holyoke. Excellent. That color scheme, that color scheme you see in Holyoke, that was something we fought for.
And that's good to know, actually, that was helpful. You know, and I know, I, I, I hope that planning board members, you know, have some knowledge that over the past year, you know, it was one of, it, well, from day one walking in the door, the concerted effort was to increase the number of staff in the planning department, and I'm really, really happy to have Curtis on board. It took all of the three years to make this happen. The budget was approved this last round with, with the new position. Just, just quick, like, the idea is overall that Curtis will become our land use person and will, will ultimately someday take over staffing the planning board and will also staff the zoning board of appeals. Because I think in observing it, there is a level of efficiency that will be gained by the same person doing some of the admin tasks, but then also doing the professional sort of staff support and advising. Um, my plan right now is to overlap as much as possible for, for quite a period of time, so it's not some immediate thing. Um, we have a set of projects that, you know, have been in hearing for quite some time now, and then um, Curtis will be bringing in a couple of the newer applications and we'll have overlap there. Um, so I just wanted to kind of just preview that, that's kind of been, that's kind of been the thought for some time, but it just, it kind of all of a sudden happened when we got the approved budget, um, and just really happy to have Curtis on board. He's, he's hit the ground running and.
I'd like to translate with what I just heard. It's, it's not you, it's me. Just got dumped by Zoom.
Yeah.
Is that, is that about right?
I think that's right.
It's gonna be a long-term breakup.
City planning from the beach as soon as his master plan is adopted. Got a staff of a dozen people.
Yeah, right.
Excellent, Curtis, thank you. That's great.
So I'll be, I'll be producing staff letters for not, um, uh, Main Street Rear, otherwise known as nine Coleman Street. The uh, move, uh, move-in self-storage units that are across, that are straddling the border between East Hampton and Southampton. And a comment letter for uh, one oh-two North Hampton, which is the um, the proposed apical uh, marijuana facility there. Um, obviously, with, with all these things, there's a, there's going to be not culture shock, but I, 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 I'm open to feedback on anything that I'm providing this, uh, the board with, and I want to provide as much continuity as of service between Jeff and myself, and as Jeff stated, both to, to me and to you that he's going to stay on for extended period of time with you guys here, so I just want to make sure that you guys are getting everything you need from me.
Great, thank you. All right, speaking of other things to do, our last bullet point there, Jeff, is, is a hefty.
Yeah, I think it, it's not as hefty as it might look on a list. Um, through Brenda's work on the open space plan, there was a couple um, action items listed in the two thousand thirteen plan. And those were looking at the transfer of development rights ordinance and the ridge line protection ordinance. So the task that the, the committee has is, you know, do, do we expect to tackle, try to tackle those in the next seven years? Um, and I think what I, what I wanted to add is a couple other things um, that I see coming as well, and just kind of propose that in this open space plan, you know, we have maybe something with a generalized statement to look at zoning um, amendments that will help balance our development and our protection of open space, because I think that's really what the, the transfer of de- development rights and ridge line do, and then we have solar. So this was my quick way to introduce that, you know, I am part of a working group at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that's been looking at um, a model bylaw update kind of based on the SMART program, which we've kind of seen take shape and we've seen two projects come through. And then, you know, just knowing that we are looking at changes to the accessory structure section, because it's just terribly complex to get through if you are a homeowner in, in particular. Uh, and then I, I did highlight the accessory dwelling units, um, so they're not all open space related, but I do think that on this list there are, you know, at least a couple identifiable things that might happen over the next seven years, and I think Brenda's task was you know, to ask, do we think those are within the realm of possibility to consider? Um, and include them like in an action item on the open space plan.
What is a ridge line protection ordinance?
That's the mountain ridge.
Yeah, basically, y- the idea is to preserve the, the view, like, we, I think we refer to it as the view shed instead of a watershed, like we talked about it in the context of um, the proposed zoning amendment in the highway business where the, you know, losing that view of the, of the mountain, if there's a structure there that obstructs it. So it can take a lot of different forms, but the idea is to sort of protect that view.
So it's not protecting the actual ridge line from, say, wind turbines or solar fields on the mountain, it's protecting the view from areas around the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
The actual ridge line is parked, right? Isn't it like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, all the ridge line is protected right now.
Yeah, that's right.
That's not even east area.
Yep, understood. That makes sense now.
It can get complicated. It's kind of hard to, you know, sort of pick priorities in situations like that, but lots of cities and towns have them, and it's certainly something we can, certainly something we should be looking at.
I think it'd be great to take a look at each of these and make recommendations, obviously, to the city council. That's what we'll be doing here, right? It's just sort of starting a process on each or writing a letter, as you said, Jeff, but I think also that you know, that it's the perfect kind of thing to fit in when we don't have the kind of schedule we have over the next month. Just saying.
And I think, you know, Jeff, what, what's worked, I think, in the past is sort of um, I think we've been able to have sort of like a, a brainstorm session at a meeting when we sort of started from zero to sort of give some direction for sort of what we're thinking. Um, but we've also had times, I think even you've done it, where you've brought us sort of, you know, here's a ridge line protection bylaw from four areas, cities and towns, and we can look at them that way and, and sort of pick and choose options. So I think, I, I think my guess is that you and your staff now have a bit of work to do before we can really get into our discussions on it, but yeah, I mean, but the, the flip side of that, Jim, right, is that like a lot of these things have dropped by the wayside over the years because we haven't had months off, you know, that, those days seem to be over when we can sit around and
It's true. Yeah, if we don't do it, it'll never be done. Sorry.
Yes.
FYI, I think there, there's a draft T D R that was uh, produced by the board in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen that.
Yeah, we definitely talked about that.
And there's a draft or a sample ridge line protection um, document that's on file, so they do exist, you know, so, but um, yeah.
The accessory structure one, I'm sorry, Brenda, I, I thought you were done, my apologies.
No, I really like Jeff's idea about sort of take, stepping back, taking a look at everything, prioritizing. Um, I think that makes a lot of sense.
It's, it's the accessory structure one that causes me, you know, agita, that, that's a big topic that, that, we could spend a lot of time on that one.
Yeah, and it's been, you know, it was something that Jamie was, been working on since I started, and it's just such a it, it's if you, it's the puzzle, if you move this piece, then all the other pieces have just gone awry and you have to, it's basically taking the entire section six.
Yep.
And reworking it from, from the beginning, and it, it is meaningful, like, so I think the important thing to understand is um, one of my goals has been to get planning documents um, updated so that there are, there's this data that supports moving certain things forward. Doesn't apply like across the board, it's not perfect, because we always get specific requests and identify specific needs along the way. But the open space plan, the goal is um, through these public sessions, so the public session's going to be on November fifth, so we're going to do it via uh, Zoom and it's going to be creative and it'll be fun. That, it'll help prioritize what the community thinks is really important to do. And then I think, you know, so from the open space plan, I think, just anecdotally, like the, the ridge line, if you look at East Street, you know, looking at East Street and making sure, is, is it really protected the way it should be, or could we get another, could we get a proposal for a nine-lot subdivision in every single tree? On, you know, the parcel goes, goes away. You know, that might, the open space plan should give the city some direction, some things to focus on. Um, and then same thing with the housing study, so I, I do expect the housing study to identify what are considered barriers to housing development, and they're going to be hopefully like a prioritized list of actions that should be taken. And then it kind, it kind of is up to me with a little, with some relief to, to do some more of these things, is to start bringing these forward with a little bit more of a concerted effort. Um, so it's kind of like the big picture goal is to, to start to tackle this long, the long list of zoning amendments.
I'm excited. I, I can't wait to get into what a definition of the ridge line is. You know, you watch it from the pond, that's one thing. You watch it from the the CSA up the street from me on East Street, that's something entirely different, like how distant you are from the edge makes a big difference in how the height of something developed there impacts it.
Yep, that's totally true. It gets complicated. It'll be interesting to dive into that. Um, all right, excellent. So we're done before nine.
Motion to adjourn.
Great, so the next meeting is November, then, and I'll send out another reminder in an agenda, but the next meeting is November fourth for the joint public hearing, and then um, just a reminder, November tenth is the continuation of Loudville Road, where I was tasked with writing a draft decision. And then those will be the first two new applications that, that Curtis is going to bring in, is the dispensary on North Hampton Street and the self-storage. It's that, November tenth will be a long evening. But it's, it's definitely going to be this triage of keeping those projects going and then picking the date to continue them to, you know, not expecting a decision on every night, so.
It won't be as short as tonight was. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, Jim.
Hi.
Brenda.
Hi.
Chris.
Bye.
Harry.
Hi.
And I am an I. Thank you all for your work tonight.
As well. Have a good dinner.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Have a great evening all. Jeff, do you want me to prepare the minutes for this one?
Sorry.
All right, I'm gone.
No, um, so I see Jane's on, I don't know who Jane is, but I, as of right now, we still have Zoe. Um, Zoe is a clerk out of the mayor's office.
Right, I forgot that that was what was happening.
Okay, she takes minutes for the planning board and I'm, I am trying to hang on to that.
Oh, yeah, no.
I think it's really important.
That was an offer made out of the generosity of my spirit rather than any true desire to be doing minutes.
Nope, um, I, that said, like with the Z B A is the board that we you would, as, as, you would still be required to formulate minutes as part of the Z B A, but I, as again, my rationale is that it's far less of a workhorse than this board. If we were ever to get like a.
As much as, yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, this is, these are meetings I've sat through before and can take minutes for. This is a good, well-controlled dialogue. I really have to commend the board for being really disciplined in their questioning.
Yeah, Jesse does a good job, and I think it's, it's really helpful. So it, it'll be interesting for you to observe how the Z B A functions. They're slightly different. It's just a different group of people, so it is what it is, but um, great, all right, well, thank you for hanging out and, and attending, that's good. Um, so I'm going to hop off and um, I'll be around tomorrow. Um, obviously, some other stuff going on too, but um, let me know if you need anything.
No, I think, I think I should be all set for right now. Um, yeah, I don't have anything I can think of right now.
Perfect, all right, great.
Great evening, man.
Yeah, thanks.